Did you take care of that's phone call?
Did you take care of that's phone call?
We'll have a backup.
So just a quick note that I have a recorder on as well as not the norm, but we're not sure about the order of mine.
May I ask what amends it, Mike?
Yes, that's for the minutes and if anyone hasn't, anyone on Zoom, if you're not able to record, let us know. We think we did, but I just want to be sure.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for your time. We have a Zoom, we're operating a Zoom and I have to make sure that everyone that's on this Zoom is able to hear us and also see us. Before we get into our meeting, I'd like to have a resolution.
Yes, because the borough secretary is not available, borough prior to the events in this meeting should appoint by resolution an assistant secretary. Because the borough code provides that the minutes have to be taken and there's no secretary or assistant secretary here, nobody's going to take them. So you should do that by resolution. I did draft a resolution and I will produce my way, I forgot to bring it with me. But basically what it says is that being resolved that the borough appoints Black as an assistant secretary from this day going forward, you know, until there be some other resolution thing. So I will draw it up so it will be the resolution to be circled through those on our House and have some of the things.
Okay, alright, so I need a motion. I'd like to make a motion to put Jean Sim Jack as assistant secretary moving forward from today to February.
And office manager?
I have her as assistant secretary.
The office manager person will come separate from the motion.
Okay, the secretary on the left side.
That's not a question.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor as a second. Any question?
I have a question. What's the hours and salary?
Fran, move your mic.
My question is, what are the hours that she should be working and the salary or hourly rate?
Right now, as I said, she's been working, I, to be totally honest, I can't even tell you the hours that she's been working. She's been working more than 10 hours a day, seven days a week in order to have the borough, so we're not falling in the hole. So right now, we can do it eight hour, but I know she'll probably do more than eight hours a day.
She'll do 40 hours?
Forty hours.
Would you rate it ten?
And the rate of pay, she's not receiving any insurance or anything else, council can add a number from the bills. We're trying to figure out rate for her. And it was.
She's potentially getting $15 an hour.
Correct.
That was her zoning. She was getting, she was in the zoning, temporary zoning officer at $15, at $15 an hour, she was temporary zoning.
I would recommend, okay, so I would recommend 35 an hour. She doesn't get any benefits and she's working a lot. Thirty-five an hour. We currently pay 27 an hour.
Thirty-five an hour.
That's what I said, yes. She's working.
I thought the borough was worth.
This is temporary position, yes.
Yeah. What's wrong with our other boss?
She's only.
Okay, so if you, if you wait a minute, we'll bring, we'll give you an update as to what's going on in the borough.
I'll do the job.
If you wait a minute, we'll give you an update as to what's going on in the borough right now.
I'm not agreeing with 35, I'm sorry.
Okay, what do you have?
In my head, it's 25 an hour with no benefits and it's a temporary position.
Okay, so I don't need a motion.
Okay.
The mayor just made a recognition, so I need a motion.
Okay, I'm going to take my motion and change my motion because there was a motion.
Okay, yeah, so that was a part of this discussion. So I don't have a question.
If you guys want to listen. My, my motion is to appoint Jean Sim Jack as assistant secretary, temporary assistant secretary, 40 hours a week, no benefits, and like I said, temporary, $25 an hour.
So I have a motion on the floor. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
On our president budget, we have nothing like that, so we're going to.
Can I hear you, Fran?
My question is, in our budget that we have now, which we're way behind as far as getting our revenue receipts, we're in a hole and we have nothing like this in the budget.
This is true. We have nothing like this in the budget because we didn't expect anything like this to happen. So a budget is an estimate, so things happen and with COVID happening, it put us even further behind because we had to keep a week off without, I mean, with May. So yes, are we going to be over budget in payroll? Absolutely, 100%. That's why we need to restructure this borough.
As you said, no benefits. One other, one other question, how about holidays? Do you work 40 hours a week, does he pay an hour of that benefit?
Customer rate or, or, um, policy, what's the definition?
If you have a sheet, it fully should be subject to the quicker personnel policy that you have.
The only difference with that personnel policy is it's 40 hours a week and in our policy it says benefits, but I feel because it's a temporary position, like a seasonal position, would not be given benefits.
So if it's a, if it's a temporary position, would then they advertise for that position then?
I'm sorry?
If it's a temporary position, will then the borough be advertising for that job?
Yes, we will be, we will be.
Or we just appoint it?
Yeah, because of the emergency situation that the borough finds itself in that we're doing this.
I have another question. Isn't, isn't Jean already doing the zoning job so she can?
No, she is not doing, she's not doing the zoning. We hired a zoning and code enforcement team. She was training, she was in the process of training.
So she's done with that?
Yes, so now we're moving over, we need someone to fill those positions. Any other question? I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry, let me restate that motion. So we will go ahead and we appoint Jean as assistant borough treasurer at $25 an hour and 40 hours a week.
Assistant secretary.
I'm sorry, assistant secretary. At $25 an hour, 40 hours a week.
So does that mean that's straight 40, no 10-hour days, let me explain.
Forty hours.
Forty, forty hours.
She works extra on her own.
Yes, she, she works extra on her own.
She's been doing it for the last month.
More than a month.
More than a month.
All in favor?
All right.
No.
Okay, roll call. Stacy?
Right.
Fran?
I'm a no and my reason is because we are not.
We're already, we're already busy.
I'm a no.
Tom Evans?
Yes.
Patty? And myself, I'm a yes. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you all very much. Jean, if you don't mind taking a report and recording. I am going to make an announcement. I can't operate the meeting and I can't answer the questions that are on the Zoom. So what will happen with the Zoom is that I'll get back to the meeting at some point during the mayor's report, but I can't do both because, you know, what I'm hoping that you guys can hear us and I think everyone can hear us, but I can't operate and answer the questions at the same time while conducting the meeting. Okay, and so let's get to preliminary announcement. We had an executive session today to the aid and that was to discuss personnel.
At 6:00.
At 6:00 PM. Alright, approval of minutes. We had a regular meeting in August 3rd and then we had a special meeting, which, which was canceled, so there's no minutes for the September 3rd meeting. Regular meeting, August 3rd. I'll need a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 3rd.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have several technical issues. On page 1 of 7, paragraph right above purpose there, from, I said agenda and of the agreed to move the discussion to the three. Be agreed to. That's one.
Where is, where did I leave?
Under, under the report, in fact, it said presidency waiting before possible, that there was a large individual present, receiving discussions with short term on as such, she decided to change the agenda around and agree, I would say, to move the discussion. Should be. On page 3 of 7, right under McDonald's, there's a typo there too, it cannot be guarded. Down on that same page, under multimodal grant, by president himself, I, by president, keep some judge, there should be members of having private needs, should be not needed. On page 3 of 7, under, I'm, I'm, probably most went through roll call, okay, and Tom Evans has come on. Should be E M I L A Y. And the, what is I E? Huh? It's I E.
I E.
I E?
Yes.
But it's something's got wrong down there, I don't know. Is it I E?
I E.
Oh, I'm talking about the E M I L I E, right? Well, that's not the right stuff. Alright, and then under the bills we paid, under modern, we placed generator battery, we did not do that, we did not pay that bill. Because I questioned the cost of it and we ended up buying a battery. For $90.
I think it's H.
I believe that.
Okay. Any others? You have a motion on the floor. Can you please just take the motion with correction?
I make a motion to approve August 3rd minutes with the typo corrections, please.
Stacy, remain second. I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Alright.
I have proposed. I have it. President report. I'm just going to give you a brief update of what's happening and how we've been operating as a borough in the last two weeks. We had to make the decision today to, with a resolution, to assign Jean to operate on the borough. Our borough secretary is out sick and our expected date is, to return is September 10th. So in the meantime, she's been out since our last meeting, so in the meantime, we have to have this borough operated and functioning. And so this is why Gina stepped in and has been helping us out to operate this borough. To the point where, and I'll just bring, to the point where we have payrolls that needs to be done, we have people that are employed by the borough that needs to be paid. And we had no access to anything to be able to operate. The borough had operated on a single individual for over 30 years, so we had no access to anything. And therefore, we had to call in emergency and figure out how we operate and making sure that whoever was in the borough or the employees of the borough were able to get a paycheck to be able to pay for their family. So this is what we had access to, we need access to the computers, whatever communication that was going on in this borough. And that is what we have been doing for the last two weeks continuously, everyone of the council member coming in, giving their time, four to six hours a day, depends on the time that they have, making sure that we stay afloat. But this is why we, you'll see these, these changes that we are, and that is why we needed to put that resolution in place tonight.
When is our expected return date?
As the last report we received was, it should be September 10th, which is Thursday.
Two days to arrive.
It had to because of the minutes.
Yeah.
Minutes have to be taken tonight, so we had no choice but to appoint somebody.
The first thing was appointed as assistant, as I can hear.
And, 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 we had, we had, we had hoped that she would have been back before and that didn't happen. And so we waited, so we found ourselves all backed up and so now we have to move forward and we cannot continue to push this hand down the road, we have to have Jean move in the borough. Just to, there is a lot more that's going to be coming forward as we go through this, this agenda, as you can see, we have an extensive agenda. Because we had a meeting in which, and, and, we, just to be clear, we, we, our paycheck for this borough, because we have no access to what we needed to do, our paycheck for our workers, actually, we had to get called from the bank that these paycheck bounced because we had no access to do anything. And so we had to make emergency decisions. We had a meeting that we called last Thursday and because of certain little minute issues that we did not put, the reason for the emergency meeting, it was challenged. And so we had to change meeting. And the meeting was simple for us to address some of the issues that we're facing in the borough when it comes to paying our bills and, and making sure that our workers get paid. That was really what this meeting were about and to act to go ahead and put the resolution in place to help, so that Jean could help us and move forward. But that was what that meeting was about that we had last Thursday. And so because of that, this week again, when our paycheck hit, we were able to put it because it's automatic. When it came through, we got a call from our payroll account that saying, if you guys don't have money to put, the money is usually a transfer, but we have no access. So if you cannot find funds or find a way to put that money into the payroll account, all these payroll checks will be bounced.
So what happens if the borough secretary goes on vacation for two weeks?
Can we have the number of Michael Black?
Can you, can we come on higher? My question, my question is, what happens if the borough secretary goes on vacation for two weeks? Like, who does the payroll then?
We're going to address that eventually.
Yeah, well, the way.
That's the whole problem.
The way thing.
So in 30 years of service, you don't have a vacation.
She did, but everything was just pretty much operate on, it stopped and then it comes back or pre-planned. And that is what happened. So now this happened and we are left, but we, the problem is this, it wasn't, nothing was planned and so therefore, we have no access. And so we're working with a circle that the bank was able to do transfers for us to be able to cover those payroll. And these are the issues that we're facing. We're still waiting to get email passwords and stuff like that to allow us access into the daily operation of the borough.
Right, I really think you should resolve that because it really just sounds kind of funny to have just one person have all that information. So how can you operate? And we all deserve a vacation or.
Yeah.
We all get sick.
Yeah.
That's what we say.
Well, this council wasn't here for 30 years and that's part of our problem. Right, and when I came on council first and I said, if she hits the lottery, what happens?
So then what about like these rumors that she just fired about?
A rumor, there you go.
That is a rumor. Ms. Noonan is still an employee of the borough.
Yeah.
Okay, that is a rumor, it is a lie. That did not happen. And that's what I think most of the meeting last year, the people believed that we were doing this, it is not. We have reached out and asked for access.
Can you stand up to the microphone?
Every email that I send.
You can sit back.
It came back to you because she's the only one that have access to the email and she's not receiving anything. I think maybe your email box is, is closed. Because we don't have access to our email. We've been trying to get access. We have reached out and we haven't got tool.
No, I, if you want, the issue with that was that our email account, our provider only allows us so many emails.
No, prior to that, the emails, we were, I don't know, because I got prior to that, we have gotten people that when we had the bid, saying that there's somebody that they're, they're, before she went out that they will have been returned. But then the second part came about.
But the second, the reason that Jean needed an email because she's here doing business for the borough and we don't have an option for another email address. So what they did was they deleted that one. We're putting that back in the place if we can, but that had to be, Jean needed access to be able to do her business.
So every, all of the correspondence that we're getting is now lost?
No, no.
No, it still goes to her email. Can you please come to the mic, please, and identify yourself so we know?
Actually, to help continue with the meeting and if you have questions, let councils as normal and then, you know, at the end of each part, you can ask questions if I do it more efficiently.
They have to identify themselves.
Yes, please, okay. So when you're speaking, I would like for you to come to the mic, identify yourself, who you are and your address, so that everyone can hear you. When you, when we get into the public, public participation, each individual will have just about two minutes to ask your question. And we will make sure that we answer your questions to the best of our ability.
And wipe the mic down.
And yes, we also have wipe there, so if you happen to touch the podium or the mic, we ask that you wipe it off before you go through. Okay, so we'll, we'll just move on the mayor's report. I have a lot more as we go through, as you can see some of our agenda and I'll address some of these things. And the question that you were asking, it will come into place because there will be answer in some of these, the different section that we have.
But yeah, I think a lot of, a lot of those questions are going to be answered as we go through. So it was, was it Donna who just came up to the mic? Is that right, Donna?
Yes.
Donna, and your last name?
Capenagra. Capenagra.
But thank you for making a point for me. Because my mayor's report is, this borough has been driven into the ground for 30 plus years. Been driven into the ground financially and operationally by councils that didn't oversee operations in any great detail. Year on year, this borough has run budget deficits, audits have not been performed. Just a month after I became mayor, I was given our budget to start preparations for the following year's budget. It was a few days before Thanksgiving. I took that budget home, sat in my family's living room. I was appalled of the mistakes in the budget. Things as simple as FICA or Medicare withholdings, they're fixed rates. They were not fixed rates in their line items on previous budgets. Those were my first red flags a month into sitting in this position. So over the course of the next year, other red flags kept popping up. Council began to entertain the idea of a forensic audit to see why are we keeping scenes astray? Who knows, this doesn't have to be wrong doing this, can be mistakes, it can be, but, but the point is to look into it and figure out what, what's going on and, and to help us dig out. Our personnel policy is so outdated, it doesn't cover present day circumstances often faced by employees and employer. Management of our office and road crew is nearly nonexistent. There is no redundancy in office procedures as Donna was just commenting about, how do we run if someone's on vacation? There's no cross-training. One person knows everything, and if that one person is gone, operations squeaks to a halt, your borough stops. And that's what we've been faced with recently. Our computer systems are embarrassing frankly, as is our website and telephone system with names of zoning officers, officers two generations removed. We have no computer network to speak of, just a couple of computers hooked together. We have no backup of daily work from our zoning office, our admin computers, or the secretary treasurer computers. We have no backup of QuickBooks, which is our accounting system. Any audit would have flagged that, by the way. Our computer systems, um, as I said, are about embarrassing. Um, on top of this, we've made, we, we face a tremendous budget shortfall handed down by many years of frankly malpractice. This council and I are faced with digging out of thirty plus years of mismanagement. We must find solutions, we're open to suggestions. I hope that's where this can lead. I mean, I mean, people are concerned about their friends, people concerned about the borough, um, and that's good. And I hope we can talk through and figure things out, um, anyone who wants to help. But what is certain is this path can't continue, that's not an option. In fact, that's been exposed over the course of the last month when it became clear that all of our eggs were in one basket. And no one could help dig us out when employees are out of the office unexpectedly. We need to be sure that we can pay our bills, pay our employees, take permit fees, receive tax payments, that they're secure, and so on. We have to be sure we can operate as a borough. I expect there's gonna be some discussion tonight about all of this, how we dig out from under this mess we're, we're left. To start, we have just appointed Jean Simcheck as Assistant Secretary, and I hope a motion will follow appointing her as Office Manager. Jean has been amazing in helping us stay afloat the past few weeks. Honestly, she's been here late night weekends, um, and she's trying to figure out where things are, how things work, access to computers without any passwords, access to phones without PINs, and so on. She's been helping us assess what our offices' operational needs are and where we stand, how we should structure the borough offices going forward. And that's not necessarily saying replace people, it's how you structure organizationally. That said, Jean needs help, so I'd like to ask council tonight to appoint an, an office operations committee or task force or something, something so people can sit with her during the day and be able to help figure out solutions and carry them to council when action is needed and so on. I'd be happy to help, but as mayor, I would give authorization for council to delegating any responsibilities. Uh, Jean needs help and feels this could be helpful. Finally, one more note, I'd just like to follow up on our police work session from last month. We'll be holding a work session this month again on the twenty-first, at which Chief Wagner from the regional police will be attending. Um, and hopefully DA as well. We hope you can come ask questions so that, again, we can get feedback from residents about how to provide police coverage. Regardless, no one's considering getting rid of police. It's just a consideration on, on which police to use for our coverage. So that's all I have for now.
Okay, so I have a bit of bad news. Our, our Zoom just went out, I guess we had a limited amount of time, so I'm not sure.
Eighty-four.
Uh, four. All righty, and just to, um, piggyback off what the mayor, um, just stated. Uh, we had someone came in, um, someone came in this week to look at our phone system, which, um, he said it has been outdated. We have the recordings or, you know, two, um, zoning officer back. We had someone came in this weekend to update our, look at our system and see if we change it. And his question to us, our system is so outdated, we need to have a new system in. We have... We have stuff like our, and I, I think it's further down, but we have something like our sanitation bid. What was, was, we had meetings that were scheduled for a pre-bid that we had no idea what that, what timeframe, nothing was done. When we did get access and be able to do that, our bid actually voting was supposed to be tonight. So now we have to push that back. We have three bids that were submitted, and now we have to do a pre-bid meeting, which we will have tomorrow morning. And then go ahead and most likely, because our, our contract is, 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 um, at the end of this year. And if we do not go through and get these bids in place, where our bid, the individuals or the company that we have in place will just be the same one that stayed over. But we wanna make sure that we have options.
The trash removal?
Yeah, yeah, the trash removal, I'm sorry, the sanitation, for the trash removal. So these are some of the stuff that I fell by the wayside and that we're in. The mayor comes in, Patty comes in, Tom comes in, everybody comes in, and we gave a certain amount of time and hours just to help Jean to make sure and locate stuff that were in, um, that needs to be located. We have, uh, a secretary treasurer, and we have a, what is that?
A receptionist.
A, uh? Receptionist, okay. Um, when all this happened and we came in, and she's been here fifteen years, and we came in and asked questions, she had no idea where anything was. Nothing, she couldn't give us the folder where nothing was. So we had to come in and we had to start going through things to see what we could find to make sure that we can at least get access to some. They had no, she had no, they had no information of who could change the phone system or to update that, 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 um, recording. They have no idea, um... Any, any password or anything, nothing, we had nothing. So we, we came and started flying blind, you know? And we are able to the point where we can make sure that payroll is done, and we have an idea that those individuals or companies that needs to get paid. Um, and, and, and so we're working as we go through, and all these council members have come together and just be coming in. And I must say, you know, when I called my borough on a, I shouldn't be able to call this borough on the Labor Day and get someone. And I shouldn't be able to call this borough on a Sunday and get someone, or a Saturday and get someone. Or I shouldn't be getting that email that coming out of this borough. But Jean has been here seven days a week, leaving here at nine PM at night. I had to come in one day and tell her, "Go home." But because she's trying to make sure that payroll was done and these people, that the individuals that the borough serviced were able to get paycheck, um, or that their bills were paid. This is the kind of sacrifices that people in this community and elected officials have put forward to make sure this borough is operational. And we do it willingly because we believe and we care about this borough, we care about, this is our home. And, and, and she has been doing it for the last two weeks, since our last borough meeting, the day after our last borough meeting. And we have not paid her anything to say. Today, this is September eighth, and this is the first time we're discussing payment to her for a service that she's been performing since, since...
October what?
Third, August, August third. So we have not been paid her except for what we paid for her zoning subsidy. But this is the first time we are discussing a payment for her. And she has not had access or not had planning to continue to do what she's doing. So as we go through, you're gonna hear, because we have a lot of things on our list that we need to address, that we had to take care of, we had to make that emergency. When we check our system or to be able to get into our, our emails, the emails or the computer systems to look at the backup. All our back, the backup for the borough is corrupted. There is no backup that we can look at. There's nothing there for us to look at to, to go back to, to see. So we had to take the opportunity, that we had to make an emergency decision and purchase backup. We even called in our tech person to look at the system and see how can we get something from the system, so give us a, a guideline. All our system was corrupted. So we made an emergency purchase of Ryan's backup, um, from drive to be able to capture whatever we're doing moving forward. But this is where we are. Secretary Treasurer's report. I'm trying to get everyone back on the mic.
Where our outstanding bills are as of today, it's ninety-eight thousand eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. We have bills that have not come in yet from our engineer and listener that we'll be facing as well. Our payroll, the week of eight-five through the week of nine-four was thirty-five thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. Bills that have to be paid out of liquid fuel came to two-thousand five-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Right now, our total that we got in the general funds to include taxes comes to twenty-two thousand two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and ten cents. I do not have balances for any of the accounts, because we don't have passwords to it, so we can't get in. And without authorization for the two signos, we can't even get the accounts.
I called the bank today to find out about our payroll that was, um, and how to access writing or getting our checks out to, um, or the bills that we need to pay. When I reached out to the bank today, I was told that the signer on the account of the bank was Laura Noonan and Dave Morgan. My question to the bank is, who the heck is Dave Morgan?
It might be Payrolls, do you use Payrolls Unlimited?
Yes, but they, yeah, well, we, we find that out later, but they have access to limited transfer fund. Okay, I'm not sure, do you know that, that is the way it operates?
Yeah.
The payroll account, have access to your bank account and do you have a transfer fund?
Yeah.
No, absolutely not.
Well, payroll...
That's inappropriate, no, that's absolutely not.
Payroll people cannot transfer your funds.
Well, the he does.
That's what you say.
Payroll people, they can't do your banking and push a button to take your money from your account.
So...
You have to do that in law.
No, well, we were told that he was a signer on the account.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he would, they, he have access to transfer fund because it has to be...
Use Payrolls, his name's on it.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry? I can't hear you, can you come to the mic, please?
She said the...
Make it to the mic.
Mary, Pat, you don't, you don't speak the word "payroll." Payrolls Unlimited is a payroll company. A gentleman's name on the account is a gentleman from Payrolls Unlimited.
It wasn't, it wasn't Payrolls Unlimited, I spoke to, I spoke to the bank to do the treasurer management from the...
But that's who that gentleman is, who does your payroll, yeah?
I called the bank.
Who does your payroll?
Uh, Payrolls Unlimited, but I didn't talk to him, I called the bank.
Yeah, but that's why his name's on it, because he, he does the payroll.
And they gave us information that he, they thought individuals that are able to, he's on it because he's able to transfer funds. They was individuals, it is two signers that are needed on.
Robbie, isn't that who does our payroll?
Yes, that's who it is, but he shouldn't be on the account.
They have the transfer fund.
No, I explained that to them, yes, he does our payroll, but he is not on anything to transfer anything.
The treasurer, yeah.
Right, he can't, and that was our concern.
Mary, can you wipe the mic, please? Thank you. Thank you, we got a complaint last night.
Okay, moving along, anything else, uh? So you need, we need a motion to go ahead and pay the bill.
Well, how, how are we paying the bills? How are we paying the bills?
Um, so what we did, we looked at our, our, our notes and our minutes, our previous accounts. Um, some of these, such as the health insurance, they are our regular monthly bill. We looked at some of the, the police department is a monthly bill that we pay. So those bills that are recurring every month, and we can see where they came from, those are the bills that we're paying. Because we have no access to the QuickBooks to know what's going on.
That's, that was...
Yeah, well, we haven't gotten access to the QuickBooks and we still waiting for access to the QuickBooks. So whatever is a, is a monthly bill that we constantly keep, um, that we constantly keep paying, we're looking at our minutes going as far back and, and paying those bills.
Is it, are they automatic payments?
No, 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 no.
It's, it, there's, there's no list of those.
Um, we can't, we can't locate them, I think a lot of it is in the QuickBooks.
No, we have a Jean probably with nine, one thousand dollars.
Actually, um, at, from all the bills, like I said, we are taking our, our notes, that what we have, um, the police department bill, which is about sixty thousand dollars that we paid to her money.
So these are certain, these are the recurring...
Recurring bills.
Every month, that's what you're paying.
That's what we're paying, that's what we can't pay now, that's what we have access. And if something comes into us, it's what we're paying, so that's...
But we also have receipts and should we, don't we need a motion to, um, so to reflect the minutes to allow someone access to the, we have a signature on, on the accounts so that we can start accessing the accounts, um, whether that be... Or no, the bank asks for a...
The bank asks for if we, um, if we could, um, if maybe our assignment to do, um, to, um, to someone else, and I think, uh, Randy's already on it. But I allow you heard, but the minutes have to reflect that. We have given access to be able to continue to complete things, um, for the borough. So if you, you're wondering why, how we get those bills, that is how we get those bills, is just by looking at our notes, need a recurring bills.
Well, these bills were also outstanding from our last meeting, correct? Because we, right? So, so we're really paying last month's bills, basically.
Correct.
What was that?
Of course, the bills.
I wanted to reflect in the minutes. I know what we're doing, but I wanted to reflect and I wanted people to know, we're paying last month's bills. Because we can't do anything else, we can't do anything for a month. Not on our fault, not fault of the council.
When you say last month, you talk about our bills?
Well, last month, we had, we had taken the bills, we had looked at it, they were approved to pay, but they didn't pay. I was in the office and I was looking at bills coming in that were past due, some of them from June.
Then the minutes were...
I had problems with that.
What you read in the minutes were bills that were paid, in my opinion.
Bills, bills that were paid after June.
I'm talking about the bills or the minutes that were read that were approved, okay? I was under the assumption that they were paid, still, but you're telling me that they're not.
They absolutely weren't paid, that's not...
No, they weren't.
We, I treasure, the minutes of the last meeting.
She was separate.
So none of the bills that were not, that should be paid are unpaid?
No, no, they were not. I think, um, there was one bill that you came in and you signed off that you said should be paid. Do you remember?
It was for the insurances. Randy, there were three checks that Randy updated.
That Randy checked in.
Insurance.
Since then, we have not paid any bill, and those checks were already made, we have not cut any check, we have not paid any bill.
Actually, you shouldn't be paying any from, that were created from August till, until, they should, they should have been all paid by August, or whatever it was. And now we're starting in September, the bills that were created from the month of August to today, or to the end of the month.
Randy, there were bills there that needed to be paid since June, that hasn't been paid.
Since June?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I went in the office and worked, and then I opened some mail, and there was bills from June with past due fees on them. From June, I'm talking June.
Saying this is your whatever notice.
Well, the point being, you have a list of bills here to pay, and... And they're not all there. I mean, you got.
Randy, we understand the bills are not all there, but this is what we have access to. This is what we're talking about. We have no access to the quick book. We have been refused access to the quick book. So we can only pay the bills that we can see or that we, we get in hand. But we know those are not all the bills. But that is all we have that we can pay right now. So instead of holding off and paying these, these, uh, these accounts, we pay what we can see, what we know is a regular bill. We pay the health insurance. We pay the police department and, and those recurring bills. That is what we're taking care of right now until we have access.
And she'll be in Thursday, so she can pay these bills.
Yeah, she should be in Thursday and then we can follow up the rest of the bills that are supposed to be paid, then should be paid. Okay? She, then she will be able to get into our, our, um, quick book and be able to see what's there and pay.
Can I just point out another, uh, uh, the bills listed here are to be paid. And actually, I'm almost certain that they don't all come on the general funds. Full of them out of the liquid fuel.
Which one of those that came up that are supposed to be out of the liquid fuel, on, Randy?
Streets and the streetlights and, and the, I think, I think that's what it is.
Yeah.
Then we have this, uh, planners.
Right.
You can run it here for you folks. There's some also that are in here that are reimbursable from, from the associates. I'd like to know what the Metz is, or seventeen nineteen ninety-six, that are. Anybody know what that's all about?
No.
You must have a bill.
We, we know. Fran, I can answer that and I will step that one up. Mets had a bill of ninety-nine dollars, some type of repairs or something. And then, um, a couple meetings ago, there was, um, their agreement that they were going to be paid in September. There are sixteen, one thousand six hundred and something. That was like part of the agreement.
So that was, that was like a two-year agreement?
That's what that is. That's what those, that number is. It's a ninety-nine dollar bill.
Then, then, then I, I was involved in that, that was my, my, that was one where we got a two-year agreement on it at the same price. And then it changed in September. Or that year, or the first year. They also are putting lubers and new valve on the furnace, which is payable after September.
This, uh, this bill was for ninety-nine dollars. It's a lot of cents, Randy, and they listed what they did. And the other one was just the base contract that was discussed before.
My suggestion, what we should do in that case, and I mentioned this, to pull out that.
Please take in the microphone.
What we should do in these cases is anybody that's in charge of, like, the building here, if they have an invoice that, that the person that shared that particular committee should be sign off on that showing that, that this was, this was done and so on. I still say that, that's what we should do then.
I personally would like a copy of the invoice. So when I'm making a motion to pay these bills, I know what I'm paying. Like, as far as the Visa, I don't like to see Visa seventeen hundred dollars and I don't know what I'm approving. Um, I know, I was in the office the other day speaking with Jean and some of the Visa charges, there's no explanations. So I would like, this is how people normally do stuff. You can get a copy of the bill so we know what we're voting on.
And any, any bill that is charged to a credit card, you'd have a copy there?
Yeah, I want a copy of the credit card bill along with the VCs. And I feel if there's no VC, if there's a fifty-dollar gas charge and that employee doesn't turn it in, that employee, whoever signed for it is responsible. I mean, there's been too much mismanaged. I'm only on this council a month. I have a background in accounting and I can't believe how we're doing bills.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to pay the bills. I have the bills that we have as a second. Any other questions before?
Yeah, I, I do make a motion.
Do you make a motion?
But I will, I'll definitely, I'm sorry.
We have a motion, we want to go ahead and pay the bills.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills as of ninety, what's here?
So it's like, um, this month's bill as a last?
Whatever bills that we have, that we have right now that we can find. So that is those past due bills and the present bills, like, for instance, the, the, like I said, the health insurance, police department. Um, um, the, the.
And we have access to the money to pay the bills then?
Um, well, these are going to be taken. Um, some of those, of those are, are from the general fund, but she should be here on Thursday.
Right.
So hopefully, once she get here, so if we approve these bills, then it, um, then these bills could go on. I have a motion, ma'am, a second. I don't remember getting a second. Ron, I have a second from Ron. I have a motion and I have a second. Any questions?
I have some questions. I think that on these particular bills, what should be done is always something you're thirsty that she should review before they're paid. Does anybody know whether it should be paid or shouldn't be paid, to be certain?
What happens if she not there on Thursday?
Well, then we've got a problem.
Well, so, so this is one of the issues while we, we're, we're doing this motion. If, if we don't have this motion now that we go ahead and pay these bills and we're waiting, we just had, we don't pass a motion that we pay the bills, we wait on Lori to come back in on Thursday. These bills are not going to be paid. We, at the first, we had a note that she would be back on the twenty-ten.
Okay, the first, you're taking the first.
No, it's not, but I mean, it's the borough. We, we held off because of that timeframe and then that is happened. So now we are pinned on the same. So anyway, if we're gambling, put it that way, we're gambling. So if we do a motion, then that means these, all these bills. You had a return date at a certain time that did not help you, but another good time. Okay, so if, if, if that doesn't happen, then we're stuck with bills from how long ago that's not going to be paid because that means we're not going to play a motion. So that means those bills are not going to be paid. Is this what we want, that we go through this far without paying that bill?
No, because it's, it's their health insurance, it's employees' health insurance, it's the police department. They're two important bills to pay. They have to be paid.
Okay, so you were saying leave it alone and go, we'll get a vote on that.
I'm saying she'll be in Thursday. Let her review these and see that they are appropriate to be paid. Don't pay a bill that we don't have to pay or already was going to.
So what are you saying? So wait until she coming, don't do the vote.
Let Lori review these.
Okay.
Let's, no, let's do the motion.
Wait a minute, we still have this question. Mike, you never.
Yes. I've heard a lot of discussions in reference to passwords and all that. Two questions to you, Madam President. Does Lori have access, does Lori have all passwords?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, did Lori offer to give the borough any passwords or other information, reference quick books, bank accounts, or et cetera?
No.
These are, these are, there's personnel matters here, Mike, and the ball for discussion and open. Those, we're not going to get into that.
No, no other questions.
Okay. All right, cool.
So I, I, I just wanted, Fran, I think what you're suggesting is that approve the bills, but then hold them until Lori comes back on Thursday. And if not, we'll, we'll go ahead with their, yeah. Um, the other comment I have is what you referenced earlier, that the bills, I believe, low strait quarry can be paid from liquid fuels. I, I want to double check that stone by, by, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, that's.
And you know, of course, can, um.
And then everything else from the general fund.
Well, Mike, the PP and L bills, I don't know whether, Jean, is that all the PP and L bills or?
No, I went, what I did is I went back to the records, entered liquid fuels, looked up PP and L. So those addresses that were on those bills paid out of liquid fuels. When the new bills came in, we just got some this evening. When we got those bills and those that were in liquid fuels, I highlighted and went through each one. This is the total left according to the way that was paid, that the three hundred and thirty-eight dollars is, can be paid out of liquid fuels based on the invoices left in that file.
What? I have one other question. Were any for like streetlights or anything like that?
We had some streetlights that fell under PP and L and you'll see it, it's listed, three thousand six hundred and dollars.
Yes.
So the three hundred and thirty-eight dollars on liquid fuel, I went back to see that they were paid out.
In other words.
Yes, and I went through each one. That was the only way to back.
Well, maybe not because they just changed the LED.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. I have a second on the floor to go ahead and pay the bills. But I am going to ask that you amend the motion to reflect what, um, what Randy always said. We make the motion to pay the bills, but however, hold off on paying these bills until Lori gets back there on Thursday.
Okay.
And I don't know.
I made that.
No.
I, I think it's.
Pull that. And then if she's, for some reason, she's not in by Thursday, then you have to ask.
Then they get paid, okay.
Okay. Okay, my motion is to approve the bills to be paid from the general fund. Hold these bills until September ten for Mrs. Noonan to come back. If she does not come back for whatever reason, if she's still ill, they must be paid. We must go forward and pay them.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? I can. Zoning. Anyone, give them all for us, please. Okay, zoning.
I got you. Good evening, Council. Um, well, since our last report, um, I'll just go through some basic guidelines and then I have some additions that I also wanted to, um, to bring up. Um, general business, uh, uh, let's see, we have cost properties, it was posted, um, on eight twenty-seven, that is for, I mean, eight twenty-seven twenty. It is for their in front of the zoning hearing board, uh, tomorrow for Aspen rental signage. Um, short-term rentals continues to be an ongoing problem. I receive complaints daily for trash noise, intoxication, um, most recent photos of a rowdy group at One Summit was received on nine one twenty. Um, I did get, uh, reports from our attorney that we're still actively trying to, um, to serve our, our two, um, I'll call them problem children, which is One Summit and, uh, Ten Show. Um, let's see. We have conducted, uh, three more rental inspections, sixty-six ten, in Smith Alley and Eleven Smith Alley. There are deficiencies on that Smith Alley. DNA properties was, um, contacted and made aware of its deficiencies. They have thirty days to rectify and label or schedule for reinspection. Um, we were, I came in front of our planning commission in regards to shed size. Um, the commission was, um, was in rent. They voted to advance it to council. However, we're still waiting for a draft ordinance from the attorney, um, attorney partner. The draft is developed by this moment, so we'll bring it, uh, once it's received. Okay, in an effort to try to get a handle on our short-term, um, rental issue, our zoning office has attended two Zoom meetings, two separate entities, Asavar and, um, Granicus, uh, regarding short-term rental identification and management. Um, each company brought forth, um, uh, information of what their company can do as far as discovery, management, complaint platform and audit compliance. Uh, basically, just as a summary, Asavar, um, works on a contingency basis. Uh, so therefore, they would, um, they would collect based on what revenue that they, uh, help generate for IC cards, um, application fees and taxes. We do not currently charge either for our certain, our legal short-term rentals. Uh, we do not currently charge an application fee, which I feel is a deficiency and needs to be looked at. Um, we should be charging that and we also, as a borough, need to look at what our, um, what, uh, chances that we have as far as collecting local taxes. Currently, we do require that they are in compliance with paying their county and state tax, but there are other municipalities that are collecting the local tax and I should read. Um, Granicus, as a courtesy, has, has actually, um, identified that we have twenty-one active listings um, on, uh, different platforms, uh, rental platforms such as Airbnb and, um, HomeAway. Uh, they would actually offer, I told them that we, we do have an issue because we don't currently generate any sort of, um, uh, you know, monetary compensation for rentals. They said that they would work with us should we choose to and we can do things kind of at a à la carte basis until we get up to speed. Um, we've received several drainage, um, issues. I went out, uh, just this past Tuesday with our, with our engineer and one of his recommendations is that moving forward, we look into setting up some sort of fund or looking into, um, uh, different ways that we could address the issues, whether going for grants, applying for grants, et cetera. Um, um, one of the other things, uh, just housekeeping stuff, there was, uh, a streetlight that was reported that was out on one oh four Knott Road, um, even though it was just recently replaced to, to my knowledge with the LED. An outage report was stacked with EPNO on nine one and you're awaiting response. I'm told that typically takes about a two-week turnaround. And as far as, um, some of the major issues that, that I see moving forward, we were talking about how the borough was concerned about, you know, funds and how much it will spend. And one of the things that was brought to my attention was our fee schedule. And so I kind of went through it with a fine teeth comb and one of the first things, though, I do have a couple of, um, recommendations based on my experience, um, in the, the development field and engineering field. Um, one of my biggest concerns is what our rate is for our commercial development fees. Currently, they are identical to residential fees and they are only four hundred dollars. I don't know if this was an oversight or why it was changed, but the recommendation from our office is to, um, address this immediately. Um, and then the other thing is moving forward, um, we need to look into having an operational budget. I, I asked Lori whether there was a, a departmental budget in place for things such as, um, equipment, um, professional registrations, things of that nature. And I'm told that there was at one point, but, um, not currently. So I think that is something moving forward would, would be useful to, um, to reinstitute. Um, and then again, we were talking about the deficiencies of our, of our computer systems and our website. Because our, our system is so outdated, we have several issues. One with managing, there's a lot of time that's not being, um, spent, um, not being spent wisely, I guess is the best way I can put it. Um, our office, uh, receives, I would say, at least, at least, uh, three times daily, um, interest in what our. um interest in what our current zoning regulations are. And they are not currently still on our website. And um they're kind of problematic because right now what we do is we get their email address and we take the time to go through relevant ordinances and forward it to them. But this is kind of a time-consuming thing that could easily be addressed. Um, and then uh same thing along the line of our our software. We currently use a program called permit manager. Um, it's not the most efficient. And it's right now, most of the information in it is really outdated. Um, there have been several times where we've tried to follow up to issue violations or just to consult with um homeowners or or um businesses to let them know that there's a deficiency that we would like to um address or correct. And most of the information in the system is not up to date. We have actually fielded a couple of high-rate calls with and and I I I can't say that I'm upset with it, but we have called people that have not lived there in over ten years. Um,
Please.
Okay, go ahead.
Please understand that permit manager is a software that was designed specifically for the operating operating system Windows seven and Windows eight. We are now operating, all the operating systems on the exterior of the office are now on Windows ten. So we're having, what's what's happening is the program is having difficulties communicating with the operating system. And therefore, what is happening is at times permit manager will crash every once in a while. It's a disaster. The program's outdated and needs to be updated. Of course, with everything going on, we understand that.
Juan, Alexis, do you um, I don't know if this solves your problem. I'm not intrinsically involved in permit manager. But if you know, I spoke to the company that develops it and they're they're upgrading it. They're rolling it out to us most likely in November. But I don't know if that solves the bigger problem of whether it's efficient or not. But in terms of it, it's gonna be um a uh web-based program at that point. So in August when I permit it, but um, not based system, as you say, so uh.
And then will it be addressed, it might be addressed. I'm not, I'm not familiar with what they plan on. Maybe if we can be in contact of what what portions of their your software that they're planning on updating.
As they roll out, we'll see.
Yeah, um, but I guess the biggest, the biggest issue is that we need to put some effort into actually updating the information that we have in the system.
Have you looked into how we can update the system that we have now and give you um, yeah, of course?
Yeah. So we should, we should, we can solve the SAB and. So going with that, um, as you, as some of you know, I've been helping Jim out in the office, working with some of the technology in the office, trying to get me up to date. Um, on moving forward with the time clocks, I'm, we're gonna be, we're gonna need approval for a new modem over at the maintenance shed because the modem that's over there is only operating on one port, one Ethernet port, which was probably put in, who knows how long ago. And we need more, we need more than one port in order to set up the time clock over there. Um, along with that, we're also gonna need the credit card from Jim to set up the time clock over at the office. The time clock over the office is all hardwired, is all ready to, ready to go. We just gotta set up the, everything else on the, on the website, on the computer. So that shouldn't be any difficulty move forward. And along with that, going back to the short-term rentals, a lot of these houses per night are offering anywhere between a hundred to eight hundred dollars a night. That is a lot of revenue that would be potentially missing out from the board. Um, along with that.
Juan, excuse me. He's short-term rentals, they're illegal to be able.
Yes, they are.
So.
Dominant.
So, how many, how many out of the twenty-one that you mentioned?
How many are illegal? Five that we know of, um, I don't know, we, if we don't.
Well, put it the other way around, how many are legal?
How many are legal? One.
One.
No, but that we know of, because we, I reached out to that homeowner and got them to fill out the paperwork. They actually qualified in there. The problem is that we have a hard time even identifying them. The courtesy twenty-one number that we have, which from Grantus, but they're not saying to give us the actual addresses unless we engage their services. So can't really give a definite number of how many of them could be um legal. Um, but we do have, we do allow it in our R two zone and our C one and C two. So I believe that there, there's still definitely revenue out there that could be grabbed. Um, but we need to identify where they are.
Okay, definitely.
And the community has been very helpful to keep us up to date with what's going on. Who's, who's doing short-term rentals, where and everything. So that's been very helpful.
And then I I just want to know, because there are a lot of resident concern um regarding that some of these short-term rentals have gotten to the point where they're not even cleaning um officially in between um, in in between their turnovers. Um, so I tried, I attempted to call our our county department to tell if their offices are not open at this time. I um, I did contact uh our our state inheritor. Um, unfortunately, I was told that um especially if you've been dealing with COVID-related matters, particularly private residences, do not fall under jurisdiction. Um, so while this is uh a huge problem, even we can't even engage the state to help us um enforce it because they're within private residence. So I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that it was something that we attempted to address and that's the feedback that we got. Um, but we don't really take no for answer. So they do have a platform where you can record a business that is operating illegally under the COVID guidelines, under guidelines of of the COVID violations. And so um for two of the residences, um that the two that I mentioned earlier, I filed, since in my opinion, they're operating as businesses, I filed a complaint on the state website, on the DOH website on um on uh September first for those two uh residents. And then we can proceed from there, but I had to do it as a business.
That's, well, it is a business.
Can I jump in here?
Yes.
I live next to one of those.
Wait, wait, one second, sir, one second.
I don't want to interrupt.
No, no, no.
But I have too much.
But I I I get a, we get a point where we are answering questions.
It's too sad, but you can tell.
Yeah, I understand your anxiety. Um, and please, um, if you could just wipe over my face.
I think I can please.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Well, and I have, you're saying that, I mean, in the non-one zone, there shouldn't be anybody that's permitted to do it. I think the only one is on Shelley Lane with Chatta, which be, I think that's finally agreed because our previous zoning officer.
Yeah, we're, we're pursuing Chatta.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that's the only one that should be, and I don't mean taking base, both being a month, a yearly figure, what you pay, isn't it? Name of the borough.
They don't pay anything, they don't pay anything.
Oh, there, there isn't, I mean, they're supposed to, right?
No, no. The only thing that, and I mean, someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing that I have come across is that for for rentals, period, short-term and long-term, they are supposed to um, we, the inspection, they pay for assets. That, as far as I know, that is the only fee that we call.
So then our short-term rental agreement that we have where it is permitted, isn't there a fee that they have to pay in order to operate it in the short-term rental?
No, that's what I'm suggesting that we need to do.
No, I think we, I think when we voted on that.
There's an initial fee that they've paid. They're talking about a some.
Yeah, but I, I want to talk about initial fee. Yes.
If, if they.
They should.
It's the seventy-five dollar fee, but that's for the initial inspection, I don't.
No.
No, 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 no.
It was in place where they should be coming in, they should seek approval from the borough.
And they get a permit.
And they, yeah, but they get a permit to operate.
Correct.
And how much did they vary a fee?
That's a seventy-five dollar.
Well, we could, we could, that is not in the government's scheme of things. And we could by resolution increase the behind the fee, that's not a luxury. Unlegal, we could do that.
Permit.
Or legal.
Or legal, legal. Anybody that's not permitted should be.
Right.
Or whatever.
Right. We agree. But yes, we, and and we should look into, that's what I'm saying, or I'm gonna look into like different, different avenues that we can do to even collect the tax on it. I'm not sure, I know there was something about because we're a borough, we might be too small. But we're continuing to look into what.
What do you need from the council right now to help you to move forward with what you're doing? Is there anything you need from the council?
For the, for the fee structure, I would suggest that that they go to the planning commission meeting and generally have the fees changed by recommendations from the government. So there's a, to catch people to forget the fees. And you could put the short, short-term rental in there too. You might, I don't know what other municipalities are doing for fees, but like, you know, if you call some of your fellow zoning officers, they probably pick out your.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've done that. For, for instance, Jackson Township charges a three hundred dollar um application fee and then they, they have ongoing, it's similar to ICs cars.
Yeah, and Jackson has water. So if you pop to the shower there and you send an officer, she quite easily gets some stuff.
Yeah, they've been very helpful. Right.
I'll, I'll go Tom Membo's, Mike, and then the gentleman in the back.
Can we make a motion? Can I make a motion to grant them permission to get the modem and the credit card to get your time clocks installed?
Okay.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'd like to make a motion so the zoning office can get a mo, a new modem and a time, uh credit card to get the time clock set up in the maintenance building up and going.
Okay.
And what can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Sir? All right, Harry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Madam President, in reference to what Alexis and Juan said regarding the short-term rentals, I'd also like, like for them to give the municipal authority a list. Because those, those short-term rentals are paying a residential rate. Illegal or legal is of no value or no consequence. It's, it's a commercial enterprise. We can back into, and happen backing into, charging them commercial rates for the sewer.
For the used, yep.
And so the sewer, so even though they are illegal, you know, if the zoning office can supply, su- supply the municipal authority with the list, uh, we will back into those fees as well for, you know, for the illegal, illegal um uh illegal short-term rentals. And those that are legal, uh, right now, there are, I know of two. I know of one at least, and he is paying the commercial rate.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll go ahead and move so that the, the zoning can work alongside with um municipal authority to provide them with.
Thank you.
The gentleman. Sir?
Yeah.
Mike, what's his name?
Okay, thank you.
Bobby Joe.
Joe.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Joe Simeon. I live in ten Devonshire, I've lived there for twenty-four years. Twenty-three of those years have been fantastic. This year, horrible. I have a short-term rental next to me at twelve Devonshire, it's a living hell. Day and night, weekends, weekdays, it doesn't matter. Three o'clock in the afternoon, three in the morning, doesn't matter. They're out of the depth, screaming down, blasting music. It's a, it's unbelievable. Um, it's an illegal rental, short-term rental, and you guys are talking about fees and stuff? You're talking about pennies to these people. People charge seven hundred sixty-four dollars a night. So if you're gonna find them or charge them fees, that's, that's nothing to that. Something has to be done. If this is an ordinance, it should be enforced. I don't know, do the police enforce this? They tell me they don't.
We've passed the resolution here, Alexis, and asking.
It's, it's, it's horrible. You, you can't even sit in your yard. You can't carry a conversation on in your yard. You have to hide in your house. I've had, I've had subwoofers from the immune. Actually, my eardrums were pulsing, pulsing. I could feel my eardrums. I had to go in my house. My, my, my chin is vibrating. It's in my house. I have my windows closed, my doors closed. It's a living hell. The garbage, that's another issue. Walk out of the house in the morning, there's a carcass of a half-eaten fish on my dr- on my driveway. Chicken bones all over the driveway. I look over, there's four garbage cans piled up, overflowing. Bags on the floor ripped open by animals. It's, it's, it's unbelievable. Cars, eight, ten cars in the driveway, cars parked on the lawn, cars ripping up and down the street like it's a highway. It's, it's about forty yards, fifty yards down to the south sign. It acts as a highway. It's unbelievable. Dog, I had a dog, a pit bull come in my yard three, four times. What if my grandson was back there? Now I gotta put a fence up. I gotta pay ten grand to put a fence up because of these people. It's, it's a living hell. Yes.
Excuse me, Joe, I'm sure you've been in.
You can see I'm upset. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. You've been in contact with the zoning officer?
I have, Alexis is very great.
Okay, and you know, council, for the last couple of months, we've been, this is one of our priorities, is illegal short-term rentals. Do you have any suggestions on your mind how to handle this?
Shut them down.
How?
Lock the house, barricade the driveway.
No, we brought that up and the legal aspects of it. Maybe you, you can get an attorney to sue this guy, I don't know, you know what I mean? Well, we're trying our hardest and it's been going into, and with new zoning, it's been going into a positive direction. You heard what that they said, that you can contact in county, state, or this.
Nonformal, Alexis. Many times. They call, they yell back and forth, they send her pictures. With the garbage.
Do you call regional police?
I spoke to an officer, he said that he doesn't enforce our ordinances.
No, I'm.
Okay, so sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, because I live over in that area.
There's another one on Stonegate Court. There's a woman on our cul-de-sac that getting hit from both sides. She's got one behind her and she's got the one next to me. People of the block have come, I've gone out in the yard and yelled at her. You know, I don't want to do that, but I have.
The one in Stonegate was, it's in our, it's in our.
Okay, so the one right next to you, I'm gonna give you my number. And when they start up this weekend, give me a call. And then I, I'll go ahead and reach out to regional and we'll still work over there. With, with our, with our resolution that we have in place. I mean, that's, that's a start.
What do you mean, when they start up?
I mean, I don't know when they get there. Do they get there in the weekend or are they all, there all the time?
All the time.
Oh.
There's, there's people there, when they leave, they come, they clean the house, and the people come immediately afterwards. It's constantly rented, it's all the time. It's not like it's just on the weekends. And this has been going on right through the height of the COVID, every, New York plates, Jersey plates, driveway filled with cars. Kids screaming down, I don't mind kids, kids are kids, they're their friends. That doesn't bother me. But when adults are out there at one o'clock in the morning screaming down like there's about two dozen of them back there. It, it's, it's like they have some kind of liquor-drinking party or something, screaming and cheering each other on. It's amazing, it's, it's, it's insane.
Right.
I mean, I don't need to be upset, but this is very upsetting. You know?
Alexis, I have a question for you.
I, I'm looking at land, I'm looking at a move. After twenty-four years here, I.
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute.
And it's gonna affect everybody. Anybody that's thinking, oh, this doesn't affect me, it's, it's affecting the price of your home.
It is.
If I try to sell my house, we should have a lot of live next to that.
Yeah. Exactly.
So I just want to tell you, council, for the last couple of months, councils, this is our priority. This is what a lot of our residents have a problem with. And I side with you on this.
Okay, so sir, um, we're gonna, um, we have a resolution in place that we, we give to the police officer. But they have something to work on. And we'll just go ahead and um address that again.
If, if, I know Alexis has said, if we, if we um took this in and they got more control on it and allowed it, then we can get more control on it. If, I'm, I'm not, I'm not getting across correctly. But the thing is, is these people don't care about rules. They don't care about rules, they do whatever they want. This person lives in Connecticut, they don't care.
So like Alexis, do we have, we don't have twelve Devonshire on our list now that we are looking?
We do.
Okay, we do.
You just start a garbage right now. It's all over the street.
Okay, sir.
That is definitely one of the five that I mentioned.
One thing that I just thought, I don't know whether you want to do it or not, no one's ever presented on this, but if you notify the Airbnb sites, we don't permit, we don't permit these in our one zone. we don't permit these in our ones, um, we try.
Yeah, so.
All right, yeah, and I have the other one.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, everybody.
Joe, we sympathize.
I'm sorry to get upset.
Hey, I don't blame you, man. Don't blame me.
All right, just make it real.
I'm gonna take the ride up here.
Yeah, we will, because we live right over there.
All righty, we have to move along.
Yeah, Ron, what?
I live on five.
I know where you live, Ron.
Yeah.
Okay, all righty.
We're right over in Thomas Street.
Hello? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I said, one idea we should to notify the listing services like Airbnb, that we say they're, this property listed is in our ones, um, we don't permit, um, short-term rentals in our ones.
And just to answer that, that has been done, and it's been done even by previous zoning officers, they don't, they don't dare. They honestly, they don't care. And I, and it actually kind of stuck with us because, um, one of our, our residents took it upon himself to use his private account in order to do it, and he's been harassed ever since. Um, based on his complaint, they shut him down for 24 hours. The owners called to complain that they shouldn't have been shut down and they're listing.
We have to, we just have to make sure that we continue to keep it going, right? Ron?
You know, I was just, I was just gonna say, why can't we, as a rural, um, I, which I couldn't really hear what people were saying, um, in the quarter. Can't you send them a letter and threaten to find them, and threaten to find them daily, daily?
That's been done for five years.
We've been doing that, yeah. And, and the problem is that even to find the owners, to get the owners, even with cases that we have right now, to get the owners to be served, we're, we're still going through the same problems, unable to review.
The owner be the one that's fired?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. And but we can't.
How far does that run down because, guess what? They don't really care, they're gonna go back to Connecticut. They don't have a way to find them.
These owners are not even living here, so it's very hard for us to find them. So they've had, um, they're hiding, and, and so we can't even find, um, serve them to be able to find them. So that is what we're doing, that's going on in this borough.
Can't we find them?
Unless, there has to be some drastic action, and making sure that each time they get their rentals in, the police officer is showing up and interrupting those individuals, and those individuals will now go online and do a negative review, and then that will probably affect it. But if, if, when, if there's no help from the police officer, then there's no, and we can't shut them down, then there's no negative review.
So I think there's a problem, and the police have to show up on a problem, like a disturbance or a fight or whatever that, but it's not there. They should be knocking on the door to say, maybe you shouldn't be here, that's our problem.
Yeah, if someone calls and to notify them, they have a resolution to be able to, you know, certain things that they can do.
Right.
You know, but we're, our hands are tied, I know their hands are tied too, we're trying to work together, but it's the owners that we have to go after. We can't locate these owners. Ron?
Who pays taxes on those houses? You know, that's a microfellow who's paying the taxes, and we go after them.
Yeah, but we, even though we have addresses, we're not able to serve them. This is what's been going on in the Summit area. They send letters and we're not able to serve them. The solicitor, I've been working with zoning, and we still can't.
No, we're gonna get them, we're gonna get them.
I'm gonna go in.
Gene made up a schedule.
I guess.
I guess you, you only had this for a couple of months, I think it's a good idea if you continue.
What's that?
This is your, uh, what's happening, property and stuff like that, for the first time. So if you continue that and get a deep compliment, I think they appreciate it. And the other thing that I mentioned, what Mike mentioned as far as guarding their people. This rate for, a partial rate for the, to, to.
Yeah.
That's how we don't think they're.
Okay, thank you. Solicitor?
I pretty much owe that a hundred percent.
Okay, those are the councilors, president. And the first that we heard, unfinished business? Okay, so.
Well, that's.
I'm sorry.
I have something that I think you mentioned, or I read an email, we have to be charged of the, giving them, extend that on the roof.
Correct.
Okay, I thought you were doing. So my, my suggestion was, there were two things that we, we should have done. Number one, we should let, have not know that we're in favor of, if we are, of having that rule from the industrial part to 611.
Okay, there.
That should be a, that should be a letter from us about standing that.
Let them know that.
They know that.
Well, I think it's better.
Earl Armichuk just spent on top of this and has ducked on the advocacy's app to both of these developers and the kind of.
And I.
And the second thing that we, I thought they sent a form to, to complete the demo file. That I, I think within the.
Who received it? Where's the form?
I was, I'm not part of the, but they was zoning at that form.
No, they sent it to Lori. They sent, sorry, they're, they're.
Okay. So we need to get that form and to move forward with that.
I'll check to see if I got it.
Okay. Okay. All right, and then, um, also, I spoke with, um, Chris, um, brother, and he is, he is just waiting on us to have that meeting, so he's wondering.
I talked to Chris right after our meeting as well. I sent him down, we pulled out, sent him the materials that you were prepared to launch, so he's probably on.
So when should we be having that next meeting? If we have done the paperwork that we need?
I would call Earl and see if he can set something up.
But we haven't done the, the work that needed to be done. Um, we said the form.
I'll look into the form, that's, that's mine, that's what I wanted.
Okay.
I'll give Earl a call tomorrow.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Um, so, since you declared Randy and Debbie here from Proximet, do they have a warrant against us?
Okay, I mean, I wouldn't have them on the list, and that's why, so then that would take away some public participation, if they didn't put them on the list. They, did you get that report that they wanted to be, this particular meeting? Thank you. Were you notifying them?
Well, we talked about that on the last Proximet meeting.
Okay.
With everything going on, we're gonna, we usually contact Lori, but she's not here, so now they can get on.
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, but you're really, we have it on there. Um, and then in regards to.
Part time. In regards to Proximet, a lot we discussed, but I.
Close the report.
Okay.
Report from.
All right, so because you have, um, if the council don't mind, I'll go ahead and allow that, but, um, in, in, um, in the future, you need to pass that to us to make sure to get some of the agenda, okay? So, um, go ahead and allow that. Who's it that you said that with this week?
Randy and Debbie.
Randy, I'll close, Parker Examen and Debbie Colton, Parker Secretary, Vice President. Uh, we have a couple of issues, uh, now that we have funded again, um, starting to move on some things. Uh, first thing, I'd like to bring up, uh, Parker, uh, voted to set forward, recommend to the Borough Council to replace the 1972 Toro Sam Pro 3000 model, uh, that we've had for quite a while, put a new engine in it. Uh, currently, it basically has had two batteries in it in the last three months. Uh, finished shot, it's a 1972, uh, and that's part of the reason why you guys have such a problem with your weeds. The infill overdoses weren't being weeded or grown on weekly, or at least, uh, every time of the year basis. So what I have here is a quote from Turf Equipment Supply Company, uh, they are Co-Stars, New York. All right, how are you doing?
Randy, I'd like one please.
I don't have any more. So, uh. Basically, it's a Sam Pro Toro, uh, Model 5040. It would come with an 18 horsepower motor, it's a three-wheel drive system, quick attach system, two-year warranty, and then the attachments are for driving the infill. Uh, I went with a, actually, what turned out to be more than what we need, we were lucky enough to get them to come out today, uh, with a demo machine, which we ran. Uh, so as we would ask that you approve up to this amount, and it will be less since you'll notice the last one is a wrong grumer with heavy duty, with HD and spring tines, scarefire. We're not gonna need the scarefire. Uh, so that price will go down. Uh, the springtime worked actually better than what we've been using, which is similar to a scarefire. So we asked that you approve up to that, because it's supposed to go until October 31st. Pretty much, it's a replacement in time for what we have already and had them limping along forever. And then, right, the Toro dealer, and they won't give a trade-in, obviously, on a 1972 model, but he, uh, says put it out there on, on any number of places and bring in $300 to $500 easily. Uh, it needs work, it doesn't run right now, battery goes dead, like a weak, brand-new batteries were put in a couple of times this year, uh, and of course, it's a tremendous time saver, keeps it feels good, and just so you all know, no one on broke payroll and using it, it's used by volunteers who aren't possibly getting. So, they're asking to approve that. The second thing is going to the dog park that we've been looking at, with a bunch of projects we've had, but with no funds, it's pretty hard to do anything. So now that we have funds, we can move forward. Uh, Debbie's gonna get into a little bit of zoning. The other thing we'd like to ask is that you would allow us to start to talk to the Borough Engineer as necessary, with the other specs for bidding that for, for the dog park.
Randy, if that deal goes through, I'd like to help you design that dog park.
Yeah, what deal goes through?
If you can get a dog park up in the field.
Uh, no, the dog park is looking at back here behind the Borough Building.
All right, I'd still like to be able to give you a design for it, because being a canine handler with the shepherds, I know quite a bit about the dogs and how they act and different things, and I've seen some nice dog parks, and if you do it right, you can separate little dogs, big dogs.
That's what we're looking for.
Out, committed out.
Yep.
What you have to do to keep the place clean, bags.
I think once we get going, we're gonna put a committee together. I think once we get going, we'll put a committee together.
Keep me in mind.
I will. Um, what I wanted to bring up is, is, um, the first thing we need to take care of regarding is the zoning. Um, I was advised by Gene and also by the solicitor, um, that we need, it's a C1, I believe, and there's no mention of a dog park in this one, so because there's no mention of a dog park, it's automatically excluded. So I'm hoping that we can do an, um, a vendor amendment to the zoning to allow for that. Would be the quickest course of action.
Just so everybody's better, in case you didn't know the location, we kind of identified as the most advantageous is where the American Legion Park was. Your American Legion property over here, where the, uh, of course, I know you've been around long enough to know, but there was a, an Eagle Scout project over there where they did a bunch of stuff, and that went to disrepair, and now it's basically all mowed grass.
It's pretty much from the ball field down to the stop sign, even though we're not gonna take all of that.
It won't be that big, but it'd be in that area.
Did you guys talk to any residents that live there, out there, families about this?
Well, there's, there's not a whole lot of residence, but it's basically shop rate is there, and then there's the woods.
Is it on this little side road here?
No, it's full drive. Yeah, right round.
Yeah.
Where you American Legion, American Legion property? You don't know?
Yeah, I know where it is.
Okay.
From where the bend is in the road.
I've got a few, I've got a few houses there.
No, there's no house.
There's like one house down by the stop sign, but.
Janelle Murray has two houses there.
Across the street.
Right.
Not on that though.
So there is.
Yeah, that's in my backyard.
That's right.
Were there any dogs out there?
Only for your dogs.
I would pick my dogs up, but I mean, why don't you have it in like the ball field?
Well, it's, we did look at the ball field, but it's an issue with shade, like, we wanted to use a little bit of the tree line so that we have some shade, otherwise, we're gonna paint the shade.
Okay.
What, what else? You guys got a plan right now on?
No, that's why we're saying.
We're in the very beginning stages, unless we get the zoning taken care of, I'm not gonna go forward with.
All right, this, this needs to go to planning.
Needs to go to planning.
Yeah, needs to go to the planning. Um, and in regards to this equipment, um, this is the first time we are hearing about this tonight, or this is the first time I'm hearing about this tonight.
It was approved at our June meeting, uh, it was voted, recommended to request Council approval by, at our July meeting.
I have never, anyone on the council have seen this before?
No.
No.
No, they've seen it.
I was on the phone.
They've seen it.
Yeah, but we, the council itself hasn't seen this or heard of it.
Yeah, this is where we're bringing it. No, that's.
But I'm, what I'm saying is, you're asking the council to approve a $23,000 that we haven't seen.
At a point.
Yeah, as, as part of, um, for, for tonight, we haven't even seen this, you know, before, or even have this, is there a second code or something for this equipment? Is there, do you have just the one code and nothing else?
The only people that make it is Toro Sam, Toro Sam, for Toro's manufacturer, they're the only people that make that.
Yeah, but this is a third party.
Researching.
Yeah.
This is on the Co-Stars contract. So it's, it's cheaper than their manufacturer's retail price.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve that, so we can have that done.
Correct.
I mean, the council wishes to pass a motion. Hello? Okay, so we'll need a motion, uh, to afford this amount, uh, however, this just came to the council attention tonight, but somewhere we should press a motion, and then we'll vote on this, but, um, I just think that we should have had some heads up on this before, and I mean, we see this, or know what's going on, and then we gotta do.
But this is the first presentation since the meeting that they've been coming through.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, even in the email, should have, you know, we could have sent an email, I said, hey, council, so we would have.
Well, I have, I sent emails to Lori.
Yeah.
Um, they sent it to Lori, that's the thing, it wasn't sent to me, so I didn't, I didn't know.
Well, like I said, Lori's not here, so we didn't. Well, like I said, Lori's not here, so we didn't.
Can we take some time to?
I mean, we could table this, we could table this.
The current one doesn't work, hasn't worked, like I said, 1972, you're basically replacing something that's 40 years old.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to table this.
What this thing is to begin with.
It's a three-wheel hydraulic motorized infield grummer.
Grummer.
On the back is an attachment.
So it's not a grasshopper?
No, it's to keep the infield, so it doesn't get pulled weeds.
Okay.
And then you don't have to pay a lot of money.
Like I said, I always say grumors what it is.
It's red.
Okay, so, okay, we have to move on. I'm gonna ask that the council table this, this contract is good until October 31st. Table this, take a look at it, and then you can do your own research, and then we'll comment this in, what is that, October.
All right, can I ask one more? Randy, you said you didn't need the last item, no?
No, it'll change.
Remember your talking point, Calvin.
Yeah, I, well, again, I, it was just today, you had the demo machine up here with this one grummer on the back. And so if I get a chance to get a revised quote, I can get a revised quote with that. But he has a scarifier and a tine on the back, it's like a nail drag. The tine is, scarifier is like metal claws. I was afraid that, and I never saw the tine before, wouldn't do the job. It actually does a better job than the grummer we have now, so scarifier can go away, we don't need that.
All right, I mean, give it kind of a correct price.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, today was the demo.
Right.
So it will be a lesser price because that last item will go down. And I'll get another quote, I'll send that in the order.
Do we have an accounting on the parks and rec? Is there funding? Is there any financials right there? Do you guys have financials right here, like?
No. We have no money.
No, I know they don't have money, but I'm wondering what we would spend.
It's hard to, I don't want to give you a financial, but I have it in.
No, I understand that, but you're, you want to set it in the parks and rec one.
Right.
So me, being in the council, I don't know how much we can spend for parks and rec.
Nothing.
Insurance. Well, up until now, we haven't spent anything.
$1,000.
What?
$1,000 for the tables.
Yeah.
We just, this, this year.
And then what about, what about?
You told them the tables.
You know, you were on Parker, right? That's why, because we didn't have no money to do it.
I don't think we got them yet.
No one's been on Parker, right? You're not set, why? Because we didn't have any money to do it.
Everybody's talking at the same time, and I have no idea what's going on here. So we are gonna table this, and we'll vote on this, and the latest contract is good until the 31st of October, and we'll vote on such then.
Then.
And then we give the council a chance to look at, do their own research, and maybe hopefully get some other.
On the other two issues, and you're saying that you want us to do what with the ordinance?
Uh, the planning, that we vote, we can, uh.
What about?
Uh, we could do a motion to send it to the planning, and have the planning take a look at that.
Simply adding dog park, C1.
Yeah, they have their research.
I was hoping it wouldn't have to go as far as that, it's not really planning, it's just to.
You're just gonna add.
Need to mention the word dog park in the zoning.
Well, it has to be.
Yeah, it should go through that.
Okay.
And then the third thing was, are you, if you're in favor of a dog park allowing us to talk with Borough Engineer, which would I assume can cost some money, can get out of parking rec funds, because you're gonna need to put together plans, you're gonna need to put bid documents to do it out, things like that.
So the person would be going to the planning, and so I'd be the motion to send it to the planning, and so we see what the planning come back with, and then, you know, please. And I have a motion to send this to the planning for. All right, a motion, I can do that in a second. Any, any objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The aye carries. Yeah, so we'll send this to the planning.
That's good, then the engineer part of it?
The thumbs up.
After the planning.
After.
After the planning.
Because we need to do that no matter where we were, so. All right.
Okay. Okay. Audit bid. Okay, so we actually had a, put out a, we had an advertisement for bids for forensic audit that was submitted, and we received four bids. We opened our bid last Friday, and the bid amount that we received were... We had a bid for $49,900, we had a bid for $33,000, we had one for $50,000 to $75,000, we had another bid for $50,000. Uh, customary is that, and I think all the council member will notify these bids, and we're intended, given the people's work for it, so they can take a look at it, look at their, at different companies, do their own research, and hopefully we can get some money from the council. Okay? Um, customary is that if we move forward that we do, if we don't win, was customary but not necessary. Mr. Solicitor, whether you're prepared to prepare the.
My input is that we're talking about spec, very large amount of money for this. As I said, you know, if what I think is, and if anybody may, we sent everybody that you, to surface contracts, and I'd be obligated to admit that, but what I would do is I would call the low bidder and see if they could do the better price than the forensic bids. Obviously, there's makes and frames, there are different prices, but to negotiate with the low bidder, see if you can get a capital of $33,000.
$33,000.
That's a lot of money. So we're trying to negotiate to get it, you know, lower than that.
Let me hear from the council. Can I hear from the council?
Well, I keep, place in my mind, but one of the bids, I think, was from Scroutler.
Yeah.
The other two were kind of far away.
Uh, they were one from Chicago, one from New York, and one from.
I don't know the prices, I might, I might, I might immediately, I might try to keep it local.
Well, the problem with local, I'm gonna take this on some. The problem with local is that bid did not have a timeframe, like the rest of the bid that I'm thinking that our RFP had asked for. We asked for 2013 through 2019. That bid, I researched every one of these, and I actually threw that one out.
I actually spoke to that, the David management, and she stated that because they have the time, they did the timeframe detail as per, like, you know, just saying that as per the other time, they have the timeframe instead of just for the date, that that was, like, that was done. And anything else on the council?
I think, um. I think from my perspective, the, kind of, to back up, had a bit, in the sense of, so that one operation is one person. Um, and I think if we're considering this, having a firm and people who do forensic audits as career, isn't she one person?
Yeah.
She's not one person.
Okay, but she's a small, she's a small operation, and therefore the economies of scale aren't as great, and it's gonna be more expensive, even though it's local. So I think having an expert, and also because of the nature of forensic audit, having people who are objective, who don't know people, it can only be a good thing.
Yeah.
And it was one of the most expensive ones to.
Okay, yeah, it's pretty intense on the ground.
But, but I will say too, I mean, we were just talking about Longmore for about the same price, so. I know, it's a little over. $10,000.
The only thing I see is that we have the bid which are pretty much in the same range, about $50,000 and then one that's really low.
Okay, so what's, so what's the solicitor saying that reach out to the lowest bidder and even the lowest rate price? To go, to go even lower, before just accepting that. I'm hoping, and what does the council, anything for the.
How do, how do we appoint you researching, or what were your persons?
Well, to be honest with you, I threw out someone from the Seattle's firm. I didn't even want to keep her in mind. Um, the other three, I have them in order, which way I, where it went. The experience of the other three, the education of the other three, what they're bringing to the table. And also in a proposal to how to, it's not only for forensic audit to see if there's some wrong billing or whatever, it's also to where have we mismanaged for all these years? Where did the money go? We get tax money in, but where does it go? So what I liked about all of them was their experience, all their experiences, what they're bringing to the table. I really think I had a hard time deciding because their experiences outspanned, it was only four.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the council?
No, my question is, I forgot that Patty had her answer, where's the funds going?
You know, when we had our meeting the last time, the gentleman, Mr. Miller, that stood here before us, and he says to us, sometimes we have to time the funds. We are in a situation where we know where nothing is. So this is what we're asking, that we have to find a fund. We have to start somewhere, because we're looking to do a shift. If we're bringing a new team and new employee, what are we telling them? Come on in and operate off what we've done, we've been for 30 years, where we have not, we have been able to balance for a budget, where we're, keep towards in this budget, so we have to start somewhere. We have to look at, so like Patty said, on her research, it shows not only is the forensic part of it, but it's looking at where are the funds, you know, where are we falling short? Are we overspending, underspending? Where, what, what is happening? Why that budget, we cannot, you know, meet our budget.
No, I think if we talk to these people, and you gotta, gotta, you know, confirm what services they're providing, I understand, that's not what I understand, a forensic audit.
No.
If a forensic audit says, you know, here's a check for $100, there's a bill for $100, and if there's a check that there's gonna bill, or a bill gonna check, then that's, that's kind of what they were back to. If you're, what we discussed is like, well, our management consultants.
Well, I think, Jim, there is.
They'll vote, they'll vote, yeah.
There is that issue, but I think also, to me, you were describing a normal audit, and a forensic audit is also looking at the books, and historically, the, the count, the line items, specifically counting, and seeing, looking for inconsistencies and where, where problems were. And that leads to a discussion about mismanagement, and if that did happen, or so on and so forth, that, I mean, that's, that's my experience.
I mean, this, this borough, what I'm understanding, and I'm only living here two years, what I'm understanding is every year, you borrow from the next year to pay December's bills. We can't keep going on like this, I mean, you can't do it. And there's a reason why, we can't tax money. Yes, things happen, without a doubt, things happen. But like the shortcomings, like, I look at little footnotes, and it says Parks and Rec owes us $40,000, but then there's a discussion, it says $60,000, but there's nothing in our audit ever that I see the transfer. And I've asked for the paperwork for the transfer, and I was told that it's probably been tossed.
The girl paid bills for them, oh, I mean, it was a comb that, when they did the ballpark out there, that's where the money went.
Okay, but.
For $40,000.
Is it, is it owed to the general fund?
The general fund, yes.
Is it owed? Yes.
Yes, it's owed, we spent money on the general fund to face the comb for the, for the park.
But my point is, Mr. Royal, my point is, where do we have that in writing that says that transfer?
Well, it's on the, the, whatever.
It's a footnote.
Yes.
That doesn't mean anything in the accounting book.
Because it went back to February 2008.
Well, I had asked for those papers.
We don't have anything to go back to February 2008, we were told everything that was destroyed.
I'm not really sure.
I, I think you did.
We know it was done, but.
But that's not the way to move forward, I'm sorry.
The other thing we need to keep in mind, and, and, but I'm keeping track of all the money that we spent that we didn't budget, okay? So I'll be able to tell you December 31st, how much money you spent that wasn't in the budget. I know you don't wanna hear it, but you can. The other thing, the other thing is that we owe $260,000 to the intersection fund. That's not our money, that's, that's the fiduciary's money that gave us the new repairs to the, to the intersection. Not that we can use, you know, for anything without paying it back.
So this is the importance of prioritizing, and we, we have a lot of sitting in, sitting in parks and rec that don't have to be allocated, and it's our job to write, prioritize. And if we owe that to a fund, then maybe we need to consider that.
And we should be able to come in as good.
As the council would.
Robbie should.
We, and just keep in mind, we borrowed last year over $100,000 that we still have to pay back. We borrowed $100,000 in order to complete, yeah, okay, and so we still have those things in front of us.
We have a crisis or something that we use the intersection, and a couple of the taxpayers' taxes.
Okay, but Councilman O'Boyle, you just made a statement that you're keeping track, and you know it, and you let us know, but you, the council is the, the members of the council are voting on this.
You wanna know what, where are you, where are we at in staying right now?
But, but what I'm saying is, the council needs to vote on this, because this is not something that you should be, you're telling us that you have it, so we have to wait on you to tell us what it is. Because, I mean, this is where we are every year, when you, you say that, oh, well, this is what we're gonna do. You already let us know that we're gonna be showing a fund, that you always do a motion that we've already funded to pay the other. You know, so we, but we shouldn't be doing that.
But we gotta pay them back the next year, we never do it, that's the point.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
This is a new sitting council, basically, so who never did it?
That's my problem here.
Been on council 20, 20 years.
This is my problem, what I'm new, he's new, he's new. So half of the councils knew. So it's, you, you always say you never paid it back, well, I didn't even live here. You've been on council for how long? So how come these things keep going on here?
The last years, okay?
More than that, that's three years, I'm telling you, three years, that is where we started to get this from.
No, I've been talking to council meetings way longer than three years.
Councilman O'Boyle, you made a statement that without borrowing the money, that we used to get the money from the bank. That you guys used to borrow money from the bank.
And you gotta pay it back.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah.
All I know is that any business or entity that deals with money should have a pinpoint accounting system. In other words, if you wanna know something happened on Friday, October 3rd, we sent a check out, you go on your computer, put that date in, we give you a whole drawer out, and it seems that the borrower doesn't have that.
That's right.
And that's what we wanna get to done, that we have a pinpoint, up-to-date accounting service in this borough.
Okay, so we could go on and on about this, however, we have some instructions from our solicitor to go ahead and reach out to the lowest bidder and see if there's something that we can negotiate with that lowest bidder, so we can get that price a little bit lower. Will the council be in agreement with that? And so tonight, I'll get a motion, I just wanna make sure I have some question that I can put forward. But then.
I'll make a motion to move forward too. I would actually call all three.
All three, okay.
I would call all three to see what they would renegotiate. Um, but I do wanna go forward with this on.
Okay, can I be on you?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion on the floor. I am a pretty active discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Second by Councilman Revels. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're just talking about him reducing the price, not that we're gonna.
To talk, my motion was to talk to all three.
All three.
Okay, all three, wait. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye carries. Action lift?
The action request. We have the $12,000 that we were looking for for lot 103, section 4, on Brunswick. Did we get any further with that?
No.
We raised the price to $13,000.
We were $15,000, and we were supposed to, I reached out to the gentleman to see if he would go ahead. We don't know where that stands, so that is incomplete, we're not sure where that stands, if, what's going, look forward to that, so we wait on it to get back.
ABD, we're waiting on the dates for Jim Tommetta.
Okay.
Next one, bed and breakfast amendment, joint work session in September.
Okay, we have to cancel that because of the whole way.
Cancel that.
Yeah, we, we need to reset it.
Please, go. Next one is personnel policy, wedding on Burridge, from President Williams in May 1.
Wait, that was submitted to Lori in November, in July, and I think she's gonna forward it to you. Thank you, by any chance, retrieve them? Okay, sorry, so that was submitted to her back in January.
I thought, I thought that was, because it's, I will go back.
No. And, but however, I didn't make this through the council, and I think that we should go ahead and make a motion to assess the, because we review a portion of it, and then we'll do some addition pieces of it. Um, just so we have my, as a first policy in place after that point, and then with the intention of doing some amendment. That's another option that we have, because we've been, we've been kicking this down the road for a very long time, and they have not given it.
There's one concern there about individual double take, behalf of nation, behalf of. I have a feeling that what, it is something that you have that, that you've decided.
Yes, and that is one that we still need to work with amendment, we were waiting, we wanted kind of get the, the, what the municipal authorities doing in order to.
I know, but that is, I said it now. But I didn't do this, I'll send you back, I'll track one.
Because I think in July, Lori sent me, and we made some final changes, and I sent that back to her. Yeah, from, on.
I'll double track it all.
Okay, all right, what do you have there?
I have, do you want me to do on the municipal authorities that you, our.
Urban. Yes, please.
Your urban, our urban, we should undo that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Email proposals, vice counsel will review in September.
That's something, I think we have an agenda, I don't have something I'm talking about.
So this will just pass on now? Signal traffic, 611, I'm Hill Road. Last note here is Zoom meeting, help with Pendo, council, flash calls, and reps from lot 28 and Claris on 8/6. We have no other.
And that is, that was what we probably, we talked about in another meeting.
We're just gonna be setting up that video.
I would recall, throw a warrant, we charge that. I would recall, throw a alarm at your charge back a day or two.
Okay. Interview Avenue and Oak Street, Culver Room Placement. Last note here is spoke with Bonnie Peters with Pendo on eight twelve twenty. Project is delayed due to funding scope of project, the need of right away, he spends COVID nineteen, held up the project. Then letting may happen in July of twenty twenty one. No changes, so. Nuisance ordinance. CEOs asked to formulate a list of nuisances to be included in the nuisance ordinance. Do I get any further with that?
Uh, we didn't. There's something we have to.
And that would be helpful, too.
Yes.
Um, next subject is security cameras.
Um, that is at a standard right now.
In results of sanitation, we've been open that already.
Right, we did.
And Edgewood on schedule after the projects are completed. Still on Seattle. Twenty twenty road rehab project, now road.
I still got a hole in front of my property.
Yeah. So we need Jim to follow up with that.
Yes. I have to take a look. I have to take a look.
It's just half patch, that's all. There was a hole, it's patched halfway. I guess they ran out of blacktop or something, right?
Okay.
And speed limit, solar powered signs. Mayor Penn discussed with, discussed the LSA grant against last month.
Okay.
Still have. And the last one is a forensic audit, which we just discussed.
Thank you so much. Okay, new business. And I think we, with the new business, we we talk about bank information, deals to be paid, and moving you wills, I think we had a discussion already. Um, account, bank staff, and management moving forward. We need to have a motion to allow, Jim, and I think our solicitor, because I think Councilman O'Boyle is a little bit concerned with the cost of funding, so they could just give us a, 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 okay. And how we are covered.
The Borough Code provides that treasurer and assistant treasurer is required to be bonded. The Borough Code does not reference any other positions for those, and any other positions such as zone office, or anything. And my thought would be that, I suppose, I just said to Mike about this earlier today, that we consult with the insurance agent, get their recommendation, whether anybody else can be bonded or at least ensure that it's an inclusive fund. But the Borough Code specifies that so the treasurer, assistant treasurer needs to be bonded, minus the new, we always had a grant bond. I recall the time that we always had a bond.
Hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred fifty thousand. So Fran, what was your concern?
Mine, the other people. My concern was not only this, this treasurer and funds, the reps only that handles it, like, you know. I had great office people, and then maybe you get a bad egg.
I I agree, and I think that's why it's all about representation, and if the towers are out in the event of it being some surprise.
I can tell you, but I I had a conversation with the insurance agent today. And so I think Fran's idea is good to have bonded. We could also maybe consider a blanket bond for the Borough. Also, what we have, what we have in place now is one individual bond, four hundred fifty thousand for the second chair treasurer, and one for Lori specifically. And then we have an additional insurance coverage for fifty thousand for employee dishonesty, the color, dishonesty and crimes. So if there's a small thing, I think, so we have a degree of coverage. We should consider increasing that or adding a blank bond, or, you know, how our council decides.
Okay, so with all that being said, where do we, we are moving forward, because we need to continue to do business. As I said, we are at the same scale right now when it comes to, you know, operating in a bank system, and so where do we, where do we go with that? We need to have a motion, I need to, as we, as the assistant secretary, to be able to come down to business on behalf of the borough. So where do we go with that? How do we? Yeah, we can do that, yeah, but then there's obviously things that we need.
I said, for the record, zoning doesn't handle money. The only money that we can get maybe for a permit, and it's only, we're only allowed to take a check for our money for instance. So we don't handle, because I just want to make it clear, we don't handle money.
And and I must say, we recently established a policy in the borough that no cash is accepted at the borough moving forward, everything must be paid by by check.
And also for the record, any of the major things that come in go right to the Borough Secretary. So as far as like any, even even though it might be something that comes through, so all of the, like, bonds or things like that that come from the commercial developments and things of that nature, Lori never see, at least in my tenure here, has never seen any of that.
So everything goes, everything to the, to the secretary.
As I said, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have a blanket bond, just because it's it's an additional coverage, so.
But I'm, I'm just, just so you know, so that council is aware.
Yeah, the policy, the policy when I stepped in was we don't, we don't keep any money in the doors, we don't keep securities, bonds, all gets forgiven to the secretary of treasurer, so there's nothing, okay, zoning problems.
I would like to talk with the insurance agent, follow their advice, explain the current situation, and follow their advice, certainly, you need to be honored, insured, you need to, you got the current, explain the situation, and that keeps relevant, and that covers the board now.
So what, what the agent suggested today is going forward, depending on what council decides to do, there's on the agenda, there's a motion to advertise for a temporary treasurer. If if council does that, we should then add a bond for likely the same amount, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for that person. We can get the blanket bond in lieu of that, too, but but the individual bond is good as well. So, and it's minimal, it's two hundred seventy five dollars a year.
And and what's the timeframe that they, because?
They they can do it quickly. So the app, in fact, she sent me the application today. If we wanted someone bonded, she said, fill out the application, eight and a half. And they selected to turn overnight, they were on overnight. Overnight is what they're they're turning them around right now, she said, so.
Okay, but we we still, we believe that, that I need a motion to appoint, in order to be able to operate in the market, we have, we will get back. If not, then we're gonna be in the same situation.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do that, so.
And and the bank will not do anything without a minute, or it has to be.
Exactly, you can afford it.
You want to make a move as assistant treasurer?
Let me ask you something.
We we we're making a decision, and I think we should ask her.
She would assist us. It would help, you know.
We're just making that decision for her.
But I have, I do have a question, because since we're gonna put them in these minutes, and saying these minutes are done tomorrow, we're not approved until next month. Can they take on, on?
There are draft minutes, and I think they would work.
Yeah, they will, yeah.
Jean? I don't want to make a motion for nothing. Are you willing to help the Borough in?
I I said that I wouldn't help the Borough out, but by all means, everyone at council knows, I don't intend this to be a permanent position.
Right.
Especially the treasurers, you know, duties, but under the circumstances we're facing right now, I said I would do it.
And I think I would convey on behalf of Jean, the sooner the better. She did mention that, so.
Well, I mean, Mrs. Noonan may come back on his terms, so then we can't be worrying about all of this, other, how do I, and, yeah, so on.
It's just to stop that.
Right. Absolutely, it's just to fill in the gap, really.
Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion.
If you find every, who's in the middle of the seat of any of the office, it's not temporary, it's that's it.
But this is something that needs to be done anyway, in the morning, it needs to be done. So we're saying, I mean, it needs to be done, so. Yeah, but we're saying that, she's saying that I'm doing this provision temporarily, helping the borough out. So in the event that she, she reads out of it, you know, but.
What if you have someone that follows, who'll tell you, or an assistant secretary, right, okay, then it should be bonded, right?
It will be.
I think it's something that considers, right?
Yes. Okay. I have a more, is there a quick little more, I mean, more. Yes, yes, it's great. And then they may also, but we need that for the evidence.
Okay, I I would like to make a motion to have Jean subject.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop you. In the event that you talk to the, or those part, they can do a blanket, you know.
I don't, I don't know how quickly, but well, actually, the might might even be, that's not based on the background checks, it's a might, so that might be, but if council wants, I will make policy to investigate that.
Then, yeah.
Background check, that's just the state of that screen?
It's a credit check.
It's a credit, yeah. Well, it is so.
Yeah.
It's criminal. Um, okay, I make a motion. You took somebody before.
No, that wasn't you.
I'd like to make a motion.
That's twenty minutes of mass.
I'd like to make a motion to have Jean subject the assistant, I guess treasurer, moving forward right now temporary to fill in the gaps, so we can move forward on the finances. With, and with the blanket, the blanket of bonding. I want, we have that, I wouldn't.
The bond, the bond, the same as with mortgage house.
Yeah, so she will call on the.
So she has to, yeah. And she's. Okay, so she's going, and you can get that done overnight?
I have the application, I can send the application right now.
Okay, because we need that done. Before we, okay. So my motion is to put her in place as assistant treasurer, go through the bond, be a hundred fifty, fifty. It's a hundred fifty for bond fifty for dishonesty. I'm trying to.
Well, the fifty, okay, so let's clarify, so.
Okay, so, yeah, one, go clarify.
Make a motion to appoint Jean assistant treasurer with a individual bond of a hundred fifty thousand. The insurance is a separate thing, that's part of a policy already, so.
Yeah.
So is that, is that just the honor policy for everybody's that works, or something?
Yeah, and this is to to be effective immediately, so it's going to be a little favorite.
Yes, because if this is going to come back, it does have to be paid up there.
I have a motion on this floor. I have a second, please.
Awesome.
Okay, any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I carry it.
So while I'm doing that, I will ask about the blanket bond to.
Yeah.
Or my own, so.
Okay, um, warrant structure. Office staff. Okay, so we already did the, um, we already did the temporary stamping for management and treasury. Um, we will need to, just keep in mind, we'll need to advertise for a, um, even in the event that when Lori gets back here, we still need to separate those provisions. Yeah, secretary treasurer, we cannot have one individual doing everything, but we need to separate them, that is correct. And the event that, um, I'm not sure how to do this more together, but that is not something we can do yet. Um, because Lori is a secretary, and she's also the treasurer's treasurer, and invited the, 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 we have to be too separate, even with the bank, they're saying that there's no oversight, they have no two. It's one person doing everything. We have to, we have to have someone who pays, and do it. Turn your role as the secretary.
So it's just to advertise, not with, I think that that.
I I want to hold.
We have the trouble here all about that factor.
I want to.
What's that?
We can't really get anybody.
Oh, okay. Um, or if the listener, they can't hear you.
I was, I was just asking, what is it being, what is being advertised for? And the answer was, for plot F, that the manager and the treasurer should be two separate individuals. And that's kind of where the conversation is right now.
Actually, it was the secretary.
Secretary of Treasury. Mike?
Madam President, I'd like to, and Franny has done this with the municipal authority. And Matt can back me up on this. At, with the municipal authority, we handle a great deal of cash, a great deal of money, right, bills and all that. We actually have a position, accounts receivable, meaning the money coming in is logged, recorded, and et cetera, and whatever programming that we have there, there is accounts and accounts payable person. So there are actually two people in that office, there is no treasurer. It's account, accounts receivable, and accounts payable, completely separate duties. So one cannot interfere with the other, and vice versa, and one cannot overstep the bounds of paying bills without the other one knowing, because they have no access to them. Right? Two separate, two separate personnel, that's what the Borough needs to get attuned to right now, two separate personnel. And I've been listening to your things about the forensic audit and all that. We also have an accountant that's there. Right? Being capable, an accountant, probably not, not worth, not not opportunity here, but an accountant. That accountant comes in and actually has a person in that office for four hours, once a month, maybe twice a month, that will balance the books to the petty of the money coming in, money going out, and will advise us that if there's any errors and discrepancies, and will sit there and find that information to her, to that. And I know this for a fact, as I've sat with her multiple, multiple times, coming in. She will, she will then balance, or one of the accounts payable person will then balance everything going out to the budget item. So that at our meetings, and I think you had that, too, we know if we budgeted a million dollars for something, whatever the item was, that we're, if we're close to it, say, and we we spent five hundred thousand dollars on that budget item, we know we still have fifty percent left on that budget item. I think that's what this Borough needs to, needs to accomplish, an accounts payable, and an accounts, an accounts receivable, and accounts payable.
Well, there's a gentleman that is on our account, and he's the one that does that DCEB audit. He's considered our accountant, am I correct? So I actually spoke with him, and because I was told that we have an audit that we pay six thousand dollars a month, or six or seven, eight thousand dollars a month to him.
I think it was seventy, seventy eight hundred a year.
Yeah, a year, we paid to him. And so I reached out to him to find out, you know, what's his position, and why is it that when we are having this problem, I wanted to have a conversation, I wanted him to come in and have a conversation with us to see what's going on, and he's supposed to be our accountant. Well, I have asked Mrs. Noonan about having a conversation with him, so we we can have a conversation with him. She told us that he decide, he said he would not speak to us because it's conflict of interest. So he would not have a conversation with him, with us. I reached out with everything, I found his name, and I reached out to him, because now we need an accountant, someone to help us along. And he absolutely denied. He said, how could I not refuse to have a conversation with you guys? You guys pay me. He said, I've never received a call that the council. He said, I've never received a call that the council needs to sit with me. Um, he said, usually when he comes in to look at the books, usually the council members are here, or they all come in and they wanna sit or know what was going on. But he has never seen any council member here, has ever come in when he's here to look at anything, and he comes in once a year, but he has never gotten a request that the council needed to sit with him. And so therefore, um, you know, he, he told us that, he actually sent us a book that every year they send us ten binders of that, uh, that audit, that general audit, that's a, or that's a small audit that they do, um, to us, and never got a response from the council. So he is willing to come in and sit down with us and look at things, but we're, you know, but that was where we are right now, so, I mean.
See, and I.
Maybe you ought to do that before you do anything else. You know, have the account come in and talk about these issues that we're talking about right now. I mean, the borough, like, the borough kind of says that there's a, the borough must appoint a treasurer who can handle the funds of the borough. Okay, so you can't, you, you, you have to have a treasurer, the borough requires you to do that. You know, whether there can be a separation of the accounting functions within the office, that I think is crushing, rather than have to account, rather than have, that's an excellent idea. If he's willing to come up, have the account come up to your work session, spend a couple hours with you, addressing these issues.
Okay, and then, so I, I think that's something we'll do with our next work session, in this cabinet meeting.
Yes.
I think what you also tell you that, uh, either that, or two girls that worked in our office, even though they were separate, they knew each other's job. So if one got sick, we always had coverage gaps there, which we don't have up here.
See, and, and one thing, uh, President, which, which I find difficult is the, uh, because Dean, his name is Dean, Dean Cable, the company. Dean is, gives us quarterly budgets that we, we need to vote on, quarterly budgets, and then from there, he gives us a six-month budget. And this, this month, we're gonna go with our year-end budget of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Uh, it's there for us to see, and it's in detail. This one happens to be a forty-one, forty-two pager, you know, real difficult lines and all this other good stuff. But he's always there for a phone call, as I call him multiple times, now, he's, he gets cut, I call him multiple times a week. Because, nah, I should say, multiple times in a two-week period, because when he sends the budget out, I wanna know where the money is. Right, and I, and that's, your, your accountant, right? Should be doing that to you, that you can call him up and say, listen, you personally, I personally, Matt calls him up as well. And so, and I don't, Ron's never called, because Ron leaves that to all of us, because Ron's on there.
Mike, Mike, not, does the municipal board get an audit every year?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the same person.
Um, yes, yes.
Well, I mean, we did ask, like I stated, and we were told that he, he refused to speak up, which of course we found out. But, um, I'm, and you're correct, um, that we should, we'll have him here at our next, um, uh, work session, because we're getting into that, um, budget period also, that we need to get some clarification, I think. Because every year we sit here with those budget sheets, and we go through, and, and come to an abort, pretty much leave this entire, um, accounting piece while we go through it every year, and then we come up, and then we find out that's the fact, and then we come back, and we, we find the money somehow.
I, I think that it's a, I would not give any advertising for any separate, uh, treasurer or secretary.
I do, right. Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, I mean, with, with in light of everything that comes about in this.
Dean's also there for, if we wanna purpose something, old Mike Bill was called to say, Dean, check out, like, didn't see where our plan is, and says we want to spend twenty dollars on a piece of machinery. And we afford it, do we have, he'll come back and say, oh, yeah, you can, it's, so, we need somebody here like that, if we have a problem, like Kerry says, where's the money coming from? You call the accountant, you ask him where it is, and can we use it? If he says no, Mike, okay, we won't buy it, just, that's it, you know, like, you're on it too.
And honestly, the borough can appoint someone, I mean, we rely on a treasurer without a coming background to do a coming, and that might not be what we wanna do, we, we, we might wanna have someone with a coming background. I mean, it's not.
Right.
A simple subject outright, um, it's not math, it's deciding what buckets things go in and, and knowing, so, um. That's always an option for council.
Madam President.
Okay, you go.
Uh, Jim, in reference to what, uh, Councilman Nell just had said something to me, suppose, and you're, you're the solicitor on this one, so you have to make the decision. Um, we have a treasurer who is at, uh, at that point, an accountant and all that. Does that treasurer have to be an employee of the borough as W two, or can it be a ten ninety-nine employee? Meaning, can we hire an, an individual or an accounting firm as a treasurer? Enlist them as they treasure.
Kind of puts me on the spot here, because I don't know the answer.
I know the answer, Matt did.
But I, but I will say that I believe that you, you probably can do that.
No, no, we can't, I, I, we can't hire, so, the, the treasurer in borough code is, um, designated as a, as a borough official, appointed by council, it absolutely can't be appointed, or can't be, um, serviced out through a contract or anything like that. It, right, it has.
The treasurer would be an accountant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it can, so it can be one person?
Yeah.
Not council.
So it can be one person, though, and not a firm?
Yes, it can be one person, yeah.
Right.
You, because it's appointed by council.
Yeah, so it's just someone with the background of a, you know, a council, if, if council desires, that's all.
There you go.
But what if, um, and I'm not sure we are ready, but what happened is, because when, um, with what we're dealing with now, like, if Diane picks up the, the mail, and it's, it's, she doesn't open anything, so it should be two eyes. She just picks it up and she transfers it over to, um, Miss Noonan, so there's no, there's one eye on everything, and it should be two eyes. Um, there should be two, a visibility, um, from two peoples.
Two eyes and two different heads.
Two, yeah, right, exactly.
Two sets of eyes.
Well, what is, what is, they're happening is there's one individual that's been operating everything, so they have no second vision on it, so. Um, and so those are some of the things that we have to look forward and correct in. All right, moving ahead, what is, where am I at? Okay, office operation committee task force, I'm not sure where that is.
No, that's what we talked about.
Okay, all right. Phone sys, phone system, we already spoke about the phone sys, system and the extension, we spoke about the email, we spoke about the, um, the modems that we, the backup system that we had to buy because our, um. Yeah, um, our alarm system code, um, we are working on that.
Has that been changed, but, but are they still the same one?
Um, it's still the same one, we still are trying to, did we get, um, did we get the list of codes from the system, or we don't know who codes? So those are some of the stuff that we're trying to find out, we don't know who has what code for the building, and we're trying to get that list.
So the point of all this being here, no. The, the, the point, the point of all that being here is to discuss whether we should appoint a, a committee to kind of help Jeanne navigate. Yes.
That'd be the task force.
Yeah. Just an office, you know, support.
So I, what I would say is, we could go ahead and, um, and, and see about a task force, um, and, um, if we need it, we use it. When Lori gets back, or when Miss Noonan gets back on Thursday, then there's not a need for it, then that, that, that task force will stand down. But in the event that, you know, if they're in place to be able to help with what's going on. Okay, and then it's all gonna be depending on council, and there are times that they can give.
Well, especially because we have Diana out now.
Yeah, oh, okay.
She has many hours now on the block.
She's got to be.
So then that leaves.
She's not gonna make a full week until sometime in October.
Yeah.
So that leaves the, the, the receptionist position open also, so we really do need.
Yeah, we could.
But I was in today, and it was crazy, like, um, well, it was, yeah, and, and.
You were covering.
They're running, answering the phone, it was, it was totally.
Thank heavens for this.
So for that, can I make a motion to, um, make a task force, emergency task force from council members to, uh, engage in office day, uh, daily business until Lori Noonan come back?
Yes, okay, so that goes, and you can, you can do that. And then what I would ask for is council to just, um, give me your time and your hours that you can dedicate to the borough, in order to get help, um.
I don't sleep at night, so I think I'm in midnight.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we need to help her.
So we have a, we have a motion, um, may I have a second please?
I'll say that.
We have a second. Okay, so we have a motion to put together a, uh, office task force to help with the operation of the borough until Miss Noonan comes, comes back in the office. And what I'll, um, what I'll ask that the council reach out and, and, um, give you your time that you can, um, dedicate. Any other, I'm sorry.
You have to take the vote on it.
Yeah, we are, yeah, okay. All right, any other discussion, um, okay? Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion on this floor, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eye carries. Okay. Presentation then is done, or is it, is public for presentation?
No, no, it wasn't.
Office staff?
Office staff.
Yeah. Okay, so what of, um. You have a, you have a question about the office staff?
One question.
Yeah.
Did you wanna talk about that, or?
Uh, I'm done, I'm done, I would like to talk about it. What? The way we're going with this borough, it needs to be structured. Now we're gonna have Jeanne in place temporarily. We can't continue to run like this. It's not fair to anyone, it's just, if this person is out, like this week Diane is out, so this leaves Jeanne by herself, thank God, the two zoning people. But that leaves them to take away from their position as well, which is extremely important. With the office staff, I would like to discuss hours, because I'm looking at, for the next, one, two, three, four, five weeks, we have a person that's out, she's not gonna make a whole week. Um, I've been in the office, I've watched this person, um, go on her cell phone, go on Amazon, go on Facebook, these different things that are happening that she's apparently not working. Um, so for that, I would like to move the office positions to part-time.
So you, is the reception position part-time?
Definitely.
Okay.
Start there.
All right, so, um, any other discussion?
Who's gonna, you say part-time, who's gonna do the rest of the time when she's not there?
Well, she's not here full, full-time now, um, we've had a lot of.
You're talking about.
Diane.
Diane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, she's, she remembers those. Please, please be careful about discussing personnel issues in a public meeting. Okay.
So, and, unless we, we come into the, the, the council for a vote, so it has to be.
But we have to vote on it, so.
If that's a recommendation.
And we, we really should be discussing it before them, so they, we.
It's not her, well, yes, it is, um, she's, we don't need her full-time.
So are you making a motion that we move that position to a part-time position, because it has to be just a vote, then another discussion?
That's kind of, well, we might need to discuss it. Um, I'm looking to move her hours. Don't have a perfect, you have to name the position, right, your motion. The position.
The, whoever it is, you have to name their position, their title.
Okay, I don't know, I don't know what her title is, is it receptionist, is it? Is it, I seen on some emails, she was your focus administrator, right, so I don't really know whether.
Exactly, she's the administrator, that's, that's, that's her title.
Okay, I don't know if she's been given that title, but, um, I would like to move that position to part-time, four days a week, seven hours a day.
It's all she works, it's that.
No, she works forty hours a week, you do four days a week, it's seven to twenty-eight.
They work right through.
Oh, no, but that's another issue, I don't even wanna go there right now, but.
Well, that would be.
They can work through their life, and I think that's, but, yeah, I think I wanna go.
That would be an effective.
And if I do now, we can compensate somebody with extra cash to, uh, the new assistant.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to restructure, I mean, we have Jeanne that's, that's helped out with zoning. Um, Fran's always saying that we're over budget, which I agree, but we didn't see COVID-nineteen coming, we didn't see different restructuring of the, when this budget was set, I should say, you guys didn't see it, I didn't set that budget, but we didn't see that. So now, we're almost at the end of the year, are we gonna be over budget? Absolutely, one hundred percent, going to the next year, and this is a time that we have to look at our budget. I've been looking at budget stuff, I've been working until twelve, one in the morning every night, Mike can confirm that, because I text him. Um, so, we always talk about budget items. We're gonna, we're gonna be behind, we're gonna be definitely caught behind, so if we don't start now, and this is part of my start, is to move this position to part-time, four days a week, seven hours a day, twenty-eight hours.
And then what we have started doing, we have started cross-training within the office, we have started the cross-training program. Right, so in the event that, um, this is why, with, um, one of our receptionists or administrator system out, then we can still operate, that we're, we're, um, and we've, um, already put in place a cross-training for, and I think you, Ron has, um, gone in his cross-training to DC. So we're doing a cross-training within the office to make sure that she can fill, um, those gaps, and so like that question that was asked earlier before, what if somebody is out, you know, um, and because this is what we found ourselves, that someone else will be able to pick it up, and we just function, continue to function.
So without going into personnel matters, what was discussed previously, um, earlier, was that, um, possibly restructuring the office staff, um, the whole office staff, um, in, in terms of the, the borough office is not zoning, but, but part-time, and, um.
Well, zoning is a little part-time.
They're part-time, our zoning is part-time.
Yeah, exactly, so effectively, then the whole office staff is part-time. Um, and because in the court, I mean, for a couple of reasons. One, our revenue sources, um, in terms of taxes and so on, this year, we will have a shortfall, in addition to the shortfall that we have year on year. Um, two, we will have to hire, uh, support at the moment to support, um, you know, Jeanne, what we've just approved. Um, we will have to hire support for the road crew, because Craig is out until December. Um, and the borough is in dire financial stress, and, um, I think it's incumbent upon us to kind of figure out how to manage this and get out of it. So, um, what has become evident in the course of the last few weeks is that the functions of these two roles in particular can be fulfilled in a part-time, um, role, position, yeah, positions. And, um, so, that's what we had discussed prior, and I don't know if council wants to consider that or not, um, but we're gonna have to, I mean, we, we did some calculations, we're gonna have to come up with some money, um, for those additional positions. Fran was talking about, where are you getting the money, where are you getting the money? We're gonna have to come up with that money, so.
It's not gonna be any different with whether it's Craig or the new person, because he's in the budget. Craig's in the budget for the year, so.
No, but what we, but what we, I'm not talking about Craig, we have to hire someone to replace Craig.
We have to hire someone for the road crew, an additional person for the road crew to take us through the winter, because we're gonna be one man down, but we still have to pay, um, you know.
But, but, in, 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 in the budget is already the cost for.
For Craig's position.
For Craig is in the budget.
Right, but what's not in the budget.
You don't have to give other money, if, if you hire me, I'm, I'm in the budget.
No, we have to, so.
We're not gonna pay Craig, so what, what are you gonna do with that money?
We are for a portion, um, not, not for the.
We still have to pay the healthcare.
We're, we're not.
But we don't have, so we have to pay for healthcare, we don't have to, we have to pay for benefit days.
Oh, that, we're in the budget too, so.
Yeah.
Right, but on top of that, we still have to hire somebody, so on top of that, we have to hire somebody, I say hire somebody part-time.
Well, yeah.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna need.
He's gonna come back in three months.
We don't know that, we don't know if he's coming back, because we never know.
Okay, so, um, what I've, I've spoken to our road, um, roadmaster, and to see how he would manage during the winter. He already assured me that he will need health during the winter, he cannot go through the winter with just two additional persons. So he'll need to hire, we'll need someone part-time, because you, the, the winter is unpredictable, so when, when our residents started complaining that they can't get out and the roads are not plowed, it's because we're short, so we have to. So we have to consider hiring someone to make sure that we have a road place and that our residents can continue to move around in the borough. We, and he assured me that he will definitely need someone, he cannot operate without one man down.
He's got the roads, he's own, you take this one, you take that one, what's missing until I've got the two blocks.
And believe me, you don't want to knock power roads in the winter.
Is that always your motion?
What, I'm wondering.
Then he did, he was going to go ahead and do the office staff to a part-time.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so he, we have a second, I may. No, that was a motion I didn't ask for a second. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to go ahead and reduce or ask office staff to a part-time. I have a motion on the floor, may I have a second, please?
Oh, certainly.
I have a second. A motion on the floor, a second, okay, any other discussion?
I have a question. Now, you have, you have a person that's going to work four days a week, who's going to do the pit for, it's five days a week.
We cross-train, that is why we cross-train, to be able to help because you have.
So who are you taking from somewhere or doesn't make?
Do you mean?
We have in-office cross-training.
Yeah, we have one from zoning who has already cross-trained over into the office base and while we're doing that in-office cross-training. They go out on the road in the morning and do their, their thing and they are back in the office. You have a Lexus that's back and forth, that you have the one for the zoning person, and they take turns in going out and doing their inspection and, or when they're, when they're called up. That's already cross-trained, so the office will not be left out of someone else. And now we have where the, the task force of the council itself are coming in. Because I think one of the major pieces that I witnessed effectively and while it's been in all that week, is more of the telephone service and then most of those.
And the short of it is we don't need someone sitting at a desk for eight hours a day answering phone calls that don't come in. What can happen is that we have an office staff and as phone calls come in, people can help and, and I think, I think we're trying to get the voicemail system that's never been updated, we're trying to get that updated so it can direct calls to the right place too, but.
To get the recording updated, Jim Berger's the CEO.
Right, well, the phone system needs to be updated, quite honestly, and I started looking into that as well. So if, once you update your phone system, times change, receptionists aren't needed as much, and this technology has replaced people.
So is, is the, I just want to clarify, is the motion for the office staff for one person?
Well, I started it with the one person, but I just. My restructure is the complete office staff because we have started with zoning at part-time. So the complete office staff moved to part-time. And I have, what I have, I, it is, can change, but four days a week, seven hours a day. And obviously rotating the days off, yeah.
Okay.
You know, I mean, so there's always, so there's always somebody at, there for seven hours. I mean, we're doing it, now we've done it in the past when people were out sick and whatnot, or vacations, whatnot, we've made it through a one day with one person, but now we are cross-trained. And like, if they're in the office, I mean, it's going to work, so.
All right, so I have, I have a motion on the floor, you want to recite the motion, I could, because one or two.
Okay, all right, that's okay. I'd like to make a motion to change all office staff to part-time positions.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor, may I have a second? Our, our second. Your second, I have a motion on the floor, I have a second.
Well, what do you mean by all office staff, everybody's in a part-time position?
Oh, okay, I see.
Okay. Administrative assistant position to part-time. Secretary treasurer to part-time. Zoning that already is part-time, don't they stay at the same? Currently, we have Jean at full-time temporary position.
Which is right, but no one has had her.
But I, yeah, I can't remember her part-time now because we've got, we're behind her.
My, my suggestion is, you know, maybe that's big out of town, but my suggestion is you start with just with the administrative assistant and don't change the other ones at this time.
We're only changing one other person then because zoning already is part-time. One other position, yes.
I would, I would not, I would not change that.
Saying that you would not change.
I would not change the secretary treasurer at this time.
Actually, that came contrary to our, I, well, I don't, I don't want to go into.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they can do what they want, that's my motion. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, I have a second, it's time to vote.
Madam.
Yes.
Question?
Right.
In court, in reference to health insurance, you've taken a person down to part-time, is she still entitled to health insurance?
No.
According to our personnel policy, no. That's wrong. Sorry. Someone's been here 30 years, you're just trying to spoil them. No, no, I'm trying to do the best thing for this Borough and you've all listened to how broke this Borough is for years. Well, before, can I just say one thing? No, you, you, please don't speak for me, that's not what I'm doing. And let me tell you one other thing, what you guys have done, you know, this social media stuff, nobody, nobody has said we were terminating Mrs. Noonan, but the fan club, I guess, felt that they should say that and last I looked at myself, I'm not a minion. But this Borough, you hear it every meeting, how broke they are.
Well, every meeting, the discussion is more and more taking away from the Borough employees and I get that there's no money, but pretty soon there's no employees that are going to work here because they will not work for part-time and no benefits.
Well, that's their choice, and, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be mean in any which way, but when I work, when I work these numbers.
Are you prepared for the fact that you may have no employees?
Yes, I'm prepared for that.
Okay.
And I'm also, you know, no matter what this Borough does, if they want to listen to us, but when we had the police meeting, we were wrong with that too. So when we try to cut costs to make this Borough move forward, you know, you guys want to hang up, so that's okay too.
If she, if Jean has worked seven days, you know, everybody, that's a big number for the street.
But she's such a lean-in on the map.
And it's, it's five days a week. It's just more people and less hours. You're not going to be able to do it. It's more people and less hours.
I said he was texting before, but he didn't read.
Yeah, and what is legal, it's still legal to say that.
Right.
Yeah, but you got more people.
Okay.
Well, you know, you just, you get rid of the water and put it in the bowl.
All right, all right, people, we can't continue to spin this around, we have a motion on the floor, we have, we have a second, we need to vote on this and either vote on it or we do that motion, but time is going to run, so I think some, you, you guys might have had your guidance on from, you know, where it needs, where it needs to come from. So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
When is this going to be effective?
Put that in the motion.
Right, immediately.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion on the floor, I have a second, all in favor?
Well, you have a question.
Okay, a question, okay.
My question is, if, if you're only going to have somebody work four days, four hours a day.
Seven hours.
Seven hours a day. And you, and you just made a statement that Jean, and thankfully Jean worked 70 or whatever hours, Saturday, Sunday and everything, to keep up with that job there, how are you going to do it with 24 hours?
That's because we're digging out and trying to figure out what happens.
Cleaning up the mess.
Nobody was in that position for how many weeks?
Pardon?
Somebody was out sick, nobody was in the position, so the work piled up.
But it's also someone who doesn't understand how it's been done.
She'll. I, I, there's no way you're going to be able to do it, so you, you make your decision, but you're.
I did make my decision.
Okay.
You can't do it.
Okay. All right, if you still have a motion on the floor, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Yes.
Yes, any others, okay. Five to one.
Was there an effective date in that motion?
Immediately.
All right, any, okay, public participation.
Madam President, Mike has something for you, the mayor has something for you.
So I shouldn't just make an announcement. On behalf of the municipal authority, there was a resignation, Ana Montez resigned her position on, on the municipal authority, so council will have to, a following meeting and consider a replacement.
Okay.
You should both accept the resignation.
Okay, so move on, then also be able to advertise, let it, put it, advertise that we.
I don't, Jim, should I read the resignation or should?
You can read it through.
I can read it. So titled resignation from municipal authority board. It is with a heavy heart, I must request that Borough Council accept my resignation from the board of the municipal, of the Mount Polkino Municipal Authority. As it is well-known, I am managing the care of my daughter who requires home care nurses and my newborn granddaughter. To say my hands have been full would be an understatement. I've been proud of the work and accomplishments I've assisted municipal authority to achieve during my three years in the position. If things change in the future, I look forward to rejoining the board if I'm needed again. Thank you, Ana Montez.
All right, a motion and a second to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Montez from the municipal authority.
Okay, a motion, I have a second. I don't think there's any discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye carries. Anything else?
I think.
Did you make the announcement, are you here or?
Oh, sure, if anyone's interested, yeah.
Let them know.
If anyone's interested in, in a role on, on the board.
No.
You can submit your letter of interest, send it to the Borough at jean. What is it, jean@mountpolkino-ba.gov.
And we'll also put it out on the website, that we have a vacation fee.
It's non-paying.
It's non-paying, all right. All righty, anything else that we're thinking? All right, public participation. All right, if there's nothing from the public, any public, okay, if there's nothing from the public, please consider this meeting adjourned.
Good night.
I just want to say thank you to council for doing a good, great job.